The residents of the... Start the motion to open the continuing public hearing.
We don't need that yet.
A little bit in the guidelines for tonight, we're going to post... I guess do you have a vote for that? That's probably at 7:40 table to 7:45. Okay. We're going to discuss the continued public hearing for the residences at Raleigh Country Club at 237 Dodge Road. While we hear from our review consultant Larry Graham from H.L. Graham Associates to give us an update on Raleigh Village Green in terms of compliance with conditions that were set during the approval process and the contractor's activities subsequent to, I guess, a joint meeting, a pre-construction meeting that took place between the planning board, the contractor, Mr. Graham. So I'll just open that up to Larry Graham.
Okay. Thank you. I think we can jump right to the email memorandum of November 5th, which I circulated to Steve Matzis, who is here, and John Moran, who is also here.
It's in your list, Mr. Graham. The board has to get on time to get some...
I guess it's in their packet.
Yep. It's in the additional materials.
Number two.
So, subsequent to our last meeting and a pre-construction meeting that we had, since the developers have engaged, did engage a landscaper, name is ProScape, well, prior to that, I'm sorry, their engineer, John Moran, did stake the no-cut, no-disturbed line along the southerly line of the site. And I inspected on two occasions that staking and approved of that work, that they had adequately delineated that area. And then the developers hired a landscaper by the name of ProScape, and they went in there on Tuesday and Wednesday today and finished up planting the understory plantings in that same area. So I'm quite satisfied with the progress that they made in that respect. And that was condition 9C of the site plan, 10C of the special permit. So it was a requirement to have that done prior to the issuance of any building or foundation permit. So as far as that particular condition, I'm satisfied it's been met, and I don't think the board needs to take any particular action on it. During our pre-construction conference, we also discussed setbacks. The previous developer had agreed, and it's in the planning board, I have notations of it made, excepted a minimum of 25 feet between buildings throughout the project. And their site plan does, by scale, show that there is 25 feet or more between buildings. There is no minimum setback that applies on this project for the setback of the buildings to the edge of street. That's only in the OSRD, as I could find. So that's why we couldn't find it in our pre-construction meeting, and it's not to mention on the plan. However, there are about four units on the plan that are setback 20 feet from the edge of pavement, the units 17, 22, 23, and 25. I'd recommend that the planning board formally request the developer to provide 25 feet. I don't think you can hold him to it. It looks like he could do that on those units, and all units in the project, without adversely impacting anything else. So I would suggest that the board request that. Certainly, I think you can request a minimum of 20 feet, because that's what's portrayed on the approved plan, although not to mention. The next item, I think they might talk to the board tonight about some design modifications with respect to garages, so I'll leave that up to them. And I'll come back to Katrina and the developers, going to check on the recording of the site plan.
It's recorded.
Special permit decisions, both recorded good. And then, in the certificate of vote, condition 9C in the COV and 10C in the special permit COV, it was incorrectly written that, in quotes, "the 13th building or foundation permit", and it should have been referred to the 13th unit, which is about halfway through the project, or the 6th building or foundation permit, whichever comes first. So I'd also recommend the board take action on this as a minor modification to those two conditions. And you want to know what those conditions are about, and I didn't include that in there, but they are... They refer to review and assessment of the plantings that I just talked about in the no-cut, no-disturbed. And if, in that review, we find that the plantings have not survived or deficient in any way in that area at that particular time, then they have to go back and replant, make that good. So that's two things I suggest you take action on. And then, lastly...
With the plantings, I'm not clear what we're doing, what we're taking action.
The plantings in the no-cut, no-disturbed...
Right. But what are we...
The action...
What are we changing or...
Well, the action that needs to be taken is, it was incorrectly written as to come about at the time of the 13th...
Oh, I see. That's what you're talking about.
Building or foundation permit. It should be at the 13th unit or the 6th building or foundation permit, because that's the halfway point.
We're just modifying the wording on the permit.
Yeah. And now, having gotten, this was about two years old, having gotten back into my files a little bit, I also found that the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWPPP, that is part of the site plan, special permit, condition 3, has and shows a phasing plan, which is different than what the Charles... Charles Company?
Charles Construction.
Yes. Charles Construction Company is proposing to do. They're proposing to build the first three buildings in as you come into the site in their phasing, and the previous developer in the plan that this board acted on proposed, the buildings were sort of spotted and separated, and leaving space that we're going to build in between. So, to me, I don't have an issue with that, but I think, for the record and the process, I think that the new developer and Mr. Moran need to bring to the board a plan of their phasing, blend it into the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. Phases 1 and 2 of that were sedimentation basins and siltation prevention, all that stuff. And then phases 3, 4, and 5 were the building. So I don't care how you rearrange it, but that's a recommendation that I make to the board. Something you can't act on tonight, but you could concur with that and give them direction as we say.
Could I add to that? Remember, the affordable units that had to be built were tied into the phasing, so we'll just have to specify whatever kind of phasing they used, just tie in when the affordable units have to be constructed?
Yeah.
I forget how it was worded in the decision. I have a clock here, if you don't mind. But did you, were you going to recommend that they act on that tonight or later?
I recommend that the board direct the applicant to move in that direction, or the on...
Larry, does this impact their order of conditions? I should ask you that.
I don't know. I don't think so.
Will this be in sync with your order?
Yes.
Okay.
Where was the reference?
It's between the two phases.
Three. One each of the two affordable units must be constructed in the first two of the three unit construction phases. Are they still doing three phases?
It was actually fat. In the approved plan, it was actually fat, but there's three building...
Three building phases.
Three building phases.
You just said two.
No, I'm dead serious.
So however they rearranged their phasing plan, it would be in one in each of the first two phases?
Yes. It's been noted. I think they know. They decide if they come back to the phasing plan.
That they deal with this too? Okay.
I don't have anything else. I've turned it over to them. Right. You know the...
Yep. Good evening. For the record, my name is John Moran, I work for the L.B. Moran Group. As Larry has pointed out, Charles Construction had bought this property. Steve Matzis is here from Charles Construction. He hired our firm to assist him with all the engineering and surveying layout, all the engineering as-built work. As you know, Apple Associates did all the original engineering permitting, and we're taking out, you know, on from this point with regards to the construction. As Larry had pointed out, we had staked out the limits of the no-disturbed zone out on the property, up to the limit of where the landscaping is proposed, and the landscaping has actually been performed based on the original approval. As Larry had stated during our pre-construction conference, we brought up some issues with regards to minimum required setbacks, because there's really nothing on the plan other than what we could scale. And based on Larry's comments, I don't see that there's going to be an issue providing a 25-foot setback for those four units that he's talking about.
Can you point those out?
Yep. He's talking about units 17, 22, 23, and 25. 17 is off the back cul-de-sac, 22, 23, and 25. So I don't think pushing these back an additional five feet is going to have that big of a negative impact on the usable space behind the units. We'd still like a little more time to look at that. We don't have any problems with Larry's recommendation about the board recommending or requesting a minimum 25-foot setback, but we'll take a look at that. One of the issues that came up during our pre-construction conference was, we currently have five units that are front-loading single-car garages. At that time, the applicant's, Charles Construction, was looking at the possibility of increasing those units to two-stall garages. They've decided not to do that. So that's off the table now, so we won't be talking about that. Another issue, though, that we did talk about was, on the side entrance garages, which there's seven of them, the architect actually wanted to propose an approximate two-foot bump out, which is really a roof line, just to provide a roof over the garage doors. Mr. Matzis actually brought tonight copies of the plans from the architect for your review to look at. The architect was at our pre-construction meeting, discussed these issues, and it was decided to bring these issues to the board. If you want to take it from this point, you can just explain.
Sure.
And again, those units are actually, it's seven side entrance units. Units 2 and 3, unit 23, 19 and 18, and then 14 and 13.
Do you have them on? You have mid-blue on the plan.
Exactly.
He's mentioned, and he'd like to see if you can do it to all of them.
Oh, do it to all of them?
Yeah. Let me see. My name is Steve Matzis, Charles Construction. Handout. Just a reference, this was the old plan that's approved. And then I'll let him ease out. And then he's just a larger version of that, so if you want to... This is a two-unit building here, three-unit building. What they'd like to do is to extend this part of the garage out two feet on all the units, just to get, he's thinking a bigger vehicle in there, to make it 22 feet. He's trying to design it for like a big suburban or something. Okay? To put that in there. So we just extend those. We were going to put two-stall garage in the one-bedroom units. We're not going to pursue that. The extension would be on all 25 units. Okay? And then the other thing that we wanted is, and there really is no elevation, that these were the back dormers on the plan that was approved, and what we were thinking about doing is combining the two, to put a shed dormer over it, if that was okay? Instead of doing two separate dormers like this. Is that also all of the window configuration? Yeah. The slide is... Same two, yes. Yes. Or close together, two of them.
Steve, I would not put, they show little shingles in between the two closest windows.
Yeah. Don't do that.
Put this in the board.
Okay.
Save just a minute, but...
Okay.
It looks better. So the two windows work together.
Okay.
And then the other two windows work together.
That's fine.
Shingles between the two groups, but...
Okay. The other one is extending the garages.
These are all side entrance garages?
No. Some of them are side.
Or all the two car garages?
Yes.
Right. Really, all the garages.
Is this five one cars and 20 car garages?
They're side, side.
Some of them are side.
There's seven, right?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. I don't. I mean, if it helps marketability and helps...
It's only two feet. I mean, we did talk during the, you know, the process about avoiding having garages extend, you know, really far ahead of the buildings to avoid that look of, you know, the garage is dominating the buildings, but I mean, it's only two feet.
And they're only on the side entrance ones too?
No. All of them. Because of the comment, it's just the marketability. All right. Any slight modifications you have?
I have a question. Are those, is that two feet being taken from inside, Steve, or are you adding on to the outside?
It's not on that garage door, up to feet.
So that's going to, that's going to complicate the setbacks that we're trying to hold, so...
Well, we'll still have to maintain. We'll look at those to make sure we still maintain the 25.
Okay. So you got to do both of them and then... Both together.
Correct.
So the room above also gets two feet more now?
Yes.
Yeah. That's fine.
Okay. You want these? All sides? Ring with the train. There's going to be eleven in room on the table after.
Well, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
The only last issue that we have, this will go pretty quick, as Larry had pointed out, we're looking at change in the phasing plan for the construction of the buildings. Currently, right now, under the SWPP plan that was prepared by Apple, there's five phases. You've got phases 1 and 2, which are actually grading phases, and then you get phases 3, 4, and 5, which are construction phases of the buildings themselves. So the way I look at it, the actual construction of the buildings isn't going to affect the first two phases that are really the development of the sedimentation control and whatnot. So modifying which buildings go in at what time, I don't think is going to have any impact, because the first two phases sets up all your drainage and drainage patterns. Currently, the way this is phased out, it's a little hard to see it, but the buildings that are in red, I had to base it based on units. The building numbers shown on the SWPP plan didn't match any of the numbers on here, but it did list unit numbers. So under phase 1, you had this building, this building, and this building. Our client would like to build these first three. So one of them's already in phase 3, and we want to build these two other buildings, one which is in phase 4 and one which is in phase 5. But you're going to be altering all of this anyway. So it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to swing all the way back into here and build these two, since we're already disturbing this one to begin with. So phase 1, or actually phase 3, we're proposing to these three buildings. Phase 2, we're still looking at what we want to do in phase 3. We can address that, put that in a letter, come up with somewhat of a modified plan of this, submit it back to Larry. At the same time, we'll address the affordable units. I believe it's something that Larry and Katrina could approve, and would ask if the board would allow Larry and Katrina to approve it when we submit it, the phasing plan. If the board wants us to come back to a meeting after we submit that, that's fine as well, but I think that we could put a plan together. Again, we'll be using this plan, and we'll just be shuffling the deck on which foundations are going to be going in at which phase. But right now, the whole point is to change these three buildings of the ones being built first, and keep this one, and then add these two.
Does your phasing plan, you said 1 and 2 was site work?
Exactly.
So does that include all the, all these pipes and fixtures? You got to do the whole stormwater, or are you just going to...
No, the way they set up the stormwater, the construction phasing, 1 and 2 is all rough grade. They've got some of the stormwater infiltration areas in, but not, obviously, none of them are all tied in, because the road isn't even in there.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
So those areas are protected after they're constructed.
It goes also the same, so you plan on marking those three buildings first? So you get partial, how do you do that with, I mean, with the water lines, the electrical, which is underground?
Yeah. All the utilities will be run in.
All the way in.
We'll be pulling them in at the same time that we're doing that.
All the way in. Once we get three foundations in, the site contractor will just keep on working all the way back. Okay. All right. So you'll be looking for partial COCs from the Concom as well, or, I mean, you'll be putting in the septic too?
Right. But we won't need, depending on how the closings go, if they're looking for partial COCs, then we'll be going in before Raleigh Concom looking for partials. I don't know, we haven't done a partial COC in Raleigh in about eight years. I don't know if they even do them anymore. Most towns don't like to do that.
Well, because they're not binding, or they don't...
Right.
Only one of those buildings, then, in your, in your phase 3, that green one, is in their jurisdiction.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and then the only other two buildings that are in conservation jurisdiction are these two.
So your stormwater management plan, I mean, the maintenance will just apply to those three and just sort of extend? I mean, it'll be the same?
Exactly. It's pretty much the same exact plan, which is putting in...
Just in a lesser scale, that's all.
Right.
Okay. I don't have a problem with you. Is anyone working with Katrina and Larry?
Nope.
Right? It's important, I mean...
If you need a planning board member, they can call me.
And also, I want to thank David for going up to the pre-construction meeting.
Well, actually, was he at work? It's not simple.
All right. Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Was the board going to officially vote on the waiver, the recommended modifications? The 25-foot setback, I don't know if that was going to be a modification.
He's still looking at it. He's going to be looking at it. He's not set, he's not set on it.
That's not, that's not set, Stone.
Yeah, but I think what Larry recommended is that the board, they can't require it, but they can recommend it.
Okay. And then about the stormwater, another phasing, that's what you were just talking about. Sorry, I'm just...
The 13th building foundation permit.
In the garage, modifications and the dormers?
No, that's not, the one we need to vote on is to change the permit for sure, under the 5, condition 10C.
9C and 10C.
To adopt that new wording? My new direction as well? Full visit. Can't vote on that.
Because any vote, we would have to send it to the building inspector so that he's aware of all these changes.
Right. So the other vote would be the vote for the garage change.
And these plans would need to get to them too.
All right. Looking like we have three votes here, so I'll entertain motions to, you know, put this in the records so that the building inspector can be informed going forward, as well as what we have to do to modify the permit. So you're looking also for an amendment, a slight modification of the permit, right?
Right.
Would that entail a re-recorded?
You could vote to decide if it's a major or minor modification. If it's minor, you can just vote, and we can write a letter, send it to the building inspector, and think that has to be recorded. Just goes in our files?
Right.
If it's recorded, it's, it makes it clear to future owners. But if it's major, then you have to have a public hearing.
You look if he's as minor, Larry?
I would, yeah.
Okay. All right. I want to knock these down now. One was kind of a non-binding, I mean, in terms of the recommendation of the board to maintain 25-foot setback from the street. Take a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And secondly, developers asking all 25 units to, in essence, make the garages larger by two feet.
Make a motion that we allow them to make the garages larger by two feet.
All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Second by click fingers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly...
Dormer windows, did you get to them?
No. Lastly, that the site plan, certificate of vote, condition 9 dot C and the special permit, certificate of vote, condition 10C, were incorrectly written as 13th building or foundation permit, in the context of, again, the phasing. That condition should refer to the 13th, well, in terms of the inspection to report. The condition should refer to the 13th unit or the 6th building or foundation permit, whichever comes first. This is looked at as a minor modification to the certificate of vote. So I'd like to have a motion that we adopt that wording and modify the COV.
Make a motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, and good luck. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. Okay. Very good. Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Time is, safe and continuous. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I'd like to now continue the public hearing for the residences at Raleigh Country Club at 237 Dodge Road.
it clear to future owners. But if it's major, then you have to.
You look if he's as minor, Larry?
I, I would, yeah.
Okay. All right. I want to knock these down now. One was kind of a non-binding, I mean, in terms of the recommendation of the board to maintain 25-foot setbacks from the street. Take a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And secondly, developers asking all 25 units to, in essence, make the garages larger by two feet.
Make a motion that we allow them to make the garages larger by two feet.
All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, sorry, second by clip peers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly.
Do you have door windows to get to them?
No. Yeah. Lastly, that the site plan certificate of vote condition nine dot C and the special permit certificate of vote condition 10C were incorrectly written as 13th building or foundation permit in the context of, again, the phasing. That condition should refer to the third, well, in terms of the inspection to report. The condition should refer to the 13th unit or the sixth building or foundation permit, whichever comes first. This is looked at as a minor modification to the certificate of vote. So I'd like to have a motion that we adopt that wording and modify.
Make a motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, and good luck.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thanks. Time is safe and continuous.
Thank you.
I'd like to now continue the public hearing for the residences of Raleigh Country Club 237th Avenue. And the goal here is, we have a memorandum from the engineer, which incorporates comments from the butters and various town boards. And then after that is finished, we will be discussing our conservation restrictions and give some guidance to the applicant in terms of that process. Publicly, I just wanted to thank not only the applicants for their cooperation in addressing a whole host of issues which were presented from various town departments. I also want to thank the town departments for taking the time, not only to go out and observe the site, but also to give comments to Katrina O'Leary, the town planner. Because I think that allows this meeting to, without that kind of input and communication, we wouldn't be able to be where we are now in terms of getting to this point where we can actually address those in a comprehensive way. We have, Jill, you have a.
Is it part of I come up there just because I have materials to give you?
Yeah, we're looking at documents with a memorandum dated what Larry just wrote. That was.
My.
That was response to the permit, that's dated November 5th, 2012. Jill Mann, the counsel for the petitioner, the applicant.
You're not a half.
Addressed your comments thereafter. So we're kind of knocking these down with any discussion that may be, if anybody, how you doing? If there's any comments from anybody who came, interested parties. Looks like it's sparser than some.
Is Jill aware that, why Mr. Lee?
Yeah, at 8:30.
Okay, I have, I can really quick. What I did was I updated, I'd sent Katrina and I'm trying to go through, and I incorporated also what you had done.
Yeah, everyone has.
And then I updated the CR, believe it or not, as recently as when I got Brent's comments, and then responded to Brent's comments. So if I can give everybody comments, because what I did, well, Katrina had asked me to do, I'm sorry, is here I, this, because what I tried to do is frame these, so that we could actually have, you know, a very productive and, if you will, fast-track meeting, because I understand that Larry needs to go. So what I tried to do was run through the comments, those comments that probably Larry didn't really think necessitated a response.
Sorry, this is a public note before I forget. The public, I mean, the letters from the departments have been posted on plenty of our website, as well as architectural landscape plans. So anybody who wants to go to the town website can view this, these materials. Additional materials will be posted as appropriate.
Okay, so if, if, no, please, if I can ask you just to look at my memo really quickly, and we can breeze through the things that I think are relatively easy to address. The municipal light department asked us to revise the types of lights we were going to do, so we'd accepted it. We're going to use the balloted LED suggested by the municipal light department. There was a question regarding the pole. We're going to remove it when we get our demolition permit. So, as far as the comments from the water department, that's, that's in part of Larry, so I'm not going to step on those. Comments from the Board of Health, we're going to submit, just as we have discussed post-reception and approval. As far as the comments from the selectmen, Larry and I both kind of addressed the issue in regard to Mr. Gorman. The only one that I would ask, that I address right now is that we are absolutely willing to name the road Raleigh Country Club Way. The other issues that were presented to us by Mr. Gorman, Larry and I both addressed. My comments just go through and respond in pretty much parallel Mr. Graham's comments, and maybe sometimes go a little bit deeper. As far as the comments from the chief of police and the lap of sidewalks and all that stuff, Larry and I both responded in the same fashion. And in addition to that.
So the sidewalk is going through the street, right?
Yeah, yeah. Apologize. What it will do, as you can see, is we actually took it through the street, and then created a nice area, a larger area, which will wait for the bus at the beginning of the street, because the bus will not come into it all of it. So we have it at the very end, and we actually show where the, um, street, oh, this is probably too small. Where the street gets bigger, and I think Larry did actually look at that as well. In addition to that, in the package that I presented to you, Larry, it's the first page, I'd sent this to Katrina earlier, so that she could actually send this to both the fire chief as well as the chief of police. What it does is Mr. Williams actually takes a truck and drives around to confirm that the radii are sufficient in order to validate access. So that's what I showed you in the plan that you have as part of the package that I submitted to you. Yes. No, it's actually in your pack, my response package. So what I tried to do was go through all the comments, and to the extent something extrinsic was needed, I just attached it as an exhibit so you could see. So this was something that just went to the chief, as both chiefs, I believe, because the question was, okay, you know, Mr. Graham and Mr. Williams are saying it's sufficient, but I, I'd like some validation that it's efficient. There's, there's the drive around. And that we understood, that's why we put the exercise.
And, and excuse me for interrupting, but just so you're aware, that truck is much bigger than any vehicle that they have. The one that, that is shown in that simulation is about 10 feet longer than that biggest, biggest.
So is this without widening any portion of that street, Road B, or?
Road B, we did widen. In, in the latest plan, we widened it from about Station 200 to 400.
We did, I apologize, we did widen that. It's just that after that, there was a follow-up comment from the chief, saying, okay, you widened it, but didn't sufficiently address it, and we wanted to prove to him that it did. So.
So do we have this comment on that, or, I mean?
I sent it to, but I believe he just wanted to make sure it was sufficient.
Right. He, he has stressed over and over again, he does want to sit down and talk with the applicant or the engineer. I did send him your response, and I think you got his email saying that he was driving a truck around today on one of the subdivision roads, just to see if they could make the turn.
And the point was is we don't know what, what the dimensions of that is.
But I think the issue won't be put to bed until.
We don't.
I mean, it's, it's, we've been trying to get him, to be honest with you, we just haven't been able to look up schedules. We have no problem talking tomorrow.
Said he could be available tomorrow.
And we will.
And this, this put it to bed, because I think he drove, he was talking about 17-foot wide roads with a car parked in the side and a truck hugging the inside. He was still able to get around, okay, with a ladder trucking.
Yeah, and I think that's.
This was a comparable out by, what's the other?
Oak something, wasn't it either?
Yeah, Oak Sledge.
Oak Ledge.
It was one of the, one of the turns at, at Wild Patrick.
But again, we just, for the record, we always want to include whatever it is that's going to demonstrate that the safety has been sufficiently addressed. So that's why that's in there. And Larry does, like, I'm sorry, it's everything you have.
Was that a, was your question, your email?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then, Mr. Graham, we're going to come back to your stuff. So the chief of police stuff we'll go through. As far as the building inspector comments, Mr. Graham, he basically said, you know what, the placement of the sign and what we had gone through last, last month was what the board should do, and then no matter what, we still have to submit a sign and get a permit from the building inspector, because that's part of the separate permitting requirement. No matter what, we have to go through that. Because this board can't grant that permit, we have to go to him and get it. Comments, try, we already addressed. As far as, last time we were before you, we had comments with regard, keep with the landscape plan. I do have the couple there. In your package, they also included the property landscape plan, showing to revise, if and as of last time, just to address the concerns that this board had, namely, here we extended the granite curving, so there was a little more traction in this area. And then we also can see how we widened the roadway to the permit for the children, just basically waiting for.
We thought of the entrance, Jill, excuse me.
Yep, the entrance, and then we also, we put both of them up so we can flip. And then we're also concerned.
No, what is, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the, oh, no, you know what? I'm sorry, it's in my memo to you? So my memo?
I looked at it.
And it's right here.
What's it actually?
Yeah.
Did you not get one of these?
No, I really, I looked at it online.
Yeah. You know what, I did, but I didn't, I wasn't able to send all of the exhibits to Katrina. I just couldn't produce that fast. So basically, we addressed the issue with regard to this, the opening, and then we also, as you can see in your package, the, the back island, we addressed. This concept plan for the landscaping takes into account the widening of the roadway. All of the site development changes that were discussed between Mr. Williams and Mr. Graham have been incorporated into the landscape plan. And then we did do, had bushes. So this area, you can see that there's been additional landscaping in the particular island, and again, there were copies of those, which were in the package. But we did, because from the last time, we're in that, but it's proven that it will not in this package yet. Those are where all of Larry's comments were addressed. We just wanted to make sure we showed you that the comments you made at the last meeting before you were willing to accept the landscape plan had actually been integrated. At this point, I'm just going to briefly say that I have included a copy of the conservation restrictions that I'd love to go through after, but I know Larry wants to do his comments, so I'm going away.
Yeah.
Right. And then I addressed everything else, and I have some, all the stuff, basically, from this point forward, as far as my presentation would go, including the conservation restrictions, my response to Brent, Bray's lack's comments, and even, even conservation restrictions that I personally have done, and then the Turner Hill conservation restriction, which I know Mr. Graham had worked on, and I did include again. I know you had read it, but I still wanted to include it. But if, if it pleased the board, I think maybe we should have, if you wanted, allow Larry.
Larry has it.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. A couple of things that Jill just went over. On the Gorman letter, I think we've, we've pretty well responded, everything's been responded to, I think, in the process that we've been going through. But you did bring up a point about the density, bedroom density. And that suggestion that the board might want to take another look at those plans, and Jill's response was that, you know, you're really not entitled to do so, but that you don't, you don't have, you know, power to do that, which I agree. But what you do have the power to do under the special permit is to look at traffic that's going to be generated, to look at other things that would be a spinoff from how many bedrooms are. So I, I think Mr. Gorman had made a point that I think the board should look into, in that particular.
And you, excuse me, I completely agree that that's the case, but we also have a certain number of bedrooms that we're going to be allowed by the Board of Health based on, based on our plans. And if they add another bedroom, it's going to put them out of compliance. So they can't. It's not like, it's not like you get to change a study into a bedroom because it's convenient. There's, there's not going to be room in the septic system to do that. So.
And.
They will be limited.
And what I meant with regard to, and Larry did say exactly what I said, with regard to Mr. Gorman's comments, weren't that you really, you can look at the insides, we'll show you whatever you want to see, and we've given you the floor plans. But Mr. Gorman's comments were more, you need to look at it and try and tell us what we can't have as far as rooms inside. And that, you know you're not entitled into Section 3 to tell us what we can do on the inside. That's all I meant. But we have no, no, no interest in expanding the number of bedrooms. There are two bedrooms.
What is this, the comment, that there's a studio, there are studies, someone?
He said that there's a study that this could potentially be transferred into a bedroom, or areas larger, it's a loft, it's larger, they could expand it, do a renovate. You can't, I mean, spec, number one is pure speculation, number two, under Section 3, he's, he's entering territory that isn't even permissible to be entered into. But we have to represent to you the number of bedrooms, and we will do so, and your permit will tell us that we can only have two bedrooms. Number one, Mr. Graham's point with regard to traffic, and we're more than willing to have that condition. Number two, we have to, because we are constrained by our, our Board of Health.
Right, yeah.
But I just meant, you know, when I have, when I have.
Any, any switch for, for a study, study into a bedroom would violate Title V and the PR compliance with that?
And would violate your, your OSRD decision, because you can't tell us, you can tell us that they have to be two bedrooms, based on traffic. I just, my concern was, you know, when a butter starts saying, let's look at the interior, let's tell them what they can and cannot do on the inside, obviously, as an attorney, I have to say, okay, maybe we stepped over the line. But I didn't want the board to think that we were saying that we didn't want that.
It precipitates a general discussion.
Exactly.
And that's always a potential problem, you know?
If it happens in the future, there's always somebody that spills the beans and gets ticked off or something, and ends up in the building department.
Oh, especially when it's condos.
Kind of association.
And I'll, I'll tell you that, that the traffic generation from a, from a, a design standpoint doesn't change whether it's two or three bedrooms.
Right.
It was, you know, anticipated in the, the design numbers that they could be, the traffic design numbers, that they could be three bedrooms. So having two or three bedrooms doesn't change the, the design.
All right, Larry, I want to make sure you have some time.
Yeah. My, my only point was, I pretty much shot their legs out from underneath out of Mr. Gorman's. Other comments, as I answered them, but I thought that this one the board should probably take, you know, take a second look.
Can we just address that?
Yeah. The other one was on the water department that I just noticed that they have said, they agree with everything with the water department, except looping the main for driveway B, and that they would like to discuss that matter, excuse me, with the water department myself, before making the change. So, so that's still on the table, I guess. Okay? Other than that, it's just kind of a general summary. I haven't seen revised plans until tonight. I, I could probably have grabbed them Monday or Tuesday, my conversation with Rich, but I told him yesterday I wouldn't have had a chance to digest and look at them anyway. They've communicated to you tonight, as Rich did to me over the phone, that they have essentially revised these plans in response to our last comments, so I would expect to be looking at these to find a comprehensive revision, in keeping with that last comment letter. So the only outstanding issues here are how we resolve primarily the water department looping, the police department comments, and the fire department comments, and how those get blended into the revised plans, which they did in response to my, we can't do that tonight.
The only thing I would love, though, to be able to discuss with the board, if we, we could, was, is the emergency access, Larry, that has been discussed, and then also the use of the hammerhead versus a cul-de-sac, because that was brought up. And I would like the input from the board, because clearly, we're willing to do, the cul-de-sac? We're willing to take out the emergency exit, if that's what the pleasure of the board is. But we thought that was a good plan, so we're looking for direction from you, because that's actually what one, one of the comments was.
Well, the police chief isn't suggesting that we remove the emergency access, is he?
Oh, yes.
He is?
Yes.
It was the police and the fire department, wasn't it, mostly?
Yeah, the fire department said it's really not useful to them.
Yeah, but I mean, they, they said, we don't.
I didn't catch that.
That's why I said, that's why those two issues, we would love to be able to discuss with you and resolve. I mean, in, in our opinion, whatever, you know, whatever the pleasure of the board is, we're going to do. If you prefer us to go back to a cul-de-sac, we will. But it was our belief that the turnaround sufficiently, two issues, the emergency and then the cul-de-sac. As far as the emergency, we thought that was a sound planning technique to be able to allow an alternative access. And I think it's sound, I, we've discussed this, I don't necessarily think it should be removed, but if the board wants us to.
Well, I think that's part of the discussion.
And there are definitely mechanisms that, that can be put in place to make sure that that emergency access is a, a real, a real access and can be used when it, when it's needed to be used. I think it's pretty easy.
So we're, we're not starting to evolve to looping the road now?
No, no.
No, no, we're just, we can't do that.
He just meant taking out the emergency access and leaving it.
Going all the way down there and never closing.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's not useful to mine. I, I like the way it is.
And that's.
I think it is useful.
And we'll, I mean, it's not as if, it's, it's not as if it's a detriment to maintain that emergency exit. I mean, by no stretch of imagination, if he's saying, well, it's not useful to me, well, then let's just leave it. Because if it ever is useful, better to not have had him say, take it out, and we then needed it.
Could I suggest maybe talking, if you do sit down and talk with him tomorrow?
Discuss that.
Talk about the, the association, the, the maintenance plan for the condo association, because I think one major concern was, it'll never get snowplowed.
Oh, it will, and it will. Because we have, we have a company do it, and part of our maintenance.
And maybe put wording right in that, and maybe that will reassure.
No, it is.
Well, emergency gates by their nature need to be plowed.
Yeah, and we're going to have a breakaway gate, so it's not as if they lose time if they were inside.
They usually do it by, it's intuitive to do it.
So, so, okay, so if it's, if it's okay with the board, and Larry, I think, was all right with us doing this, we'll discuss with the fire chief, just retaining it, explain to him how the maintenance works, and explain it's going to be a breakaway gate, which we did, but we'll have that conversation.
I hear another argument that.
And then what about?
Don't you have dogs in suspenders in this case? You have the hammerhead too, don't you?
Yeah, well, that's the other thing, is the, Larry, I don't want to speak for you, but he was, they were asking, they were saying that they would prefer us to use the cul-de-sac, but that, but it was from the chief of police, because he was concerned that an 18-wheel vehicle that could be accessing the property, very unusual to have an 18-wheel vehicle, you have. you have a big maybe furniture truck, but that's about it, but you'd have something coming in and not being able to turn around. But, you know, Rich specifically said, they can turn around, come back in and come out.
Yeah, you can, you can turn an 18-wheel around in that cul-de-sac.
They don't industrial park them.
But we, again, we wanted to bring it to you.
That cul-de-sac, I think, one of the, one of the things, you know, that is leading to maybe a little bit of confusion is that we enlarged it, and we put parking in it as part of the turnaround. So they're saying, they're worried about people parking there. If you were going to park there, you would have to park behind another real parking space, which no one's going to do. And we lengthened it, and you can see on my, my sketch showing the, the fire truck going in and out, that there is a ton of room to turn a fire vehicle around. Even if you had someone parked there, you could do it.
Will there be no parking signs in the turnaround?
And we definitely, that was one of the comments that we said we have no problem doing, and that was in my response letter, saying we will properly identify the speed limit, to the extent there's call for a stop sign, we'll put a stop sign, we will have no parking signs as well. We agree to that.
And I think you have the speed limit signs, and what you have.
Well, listen, I think this is the best of both worlds.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the board feels comfortable, so now we're going to go forward and talk.
And it gets it, and the parking makes more sense, it's more organized.
I just wanted to kind of summarize some major points, because you hit, you're hitting that one, and I think what they're looking for is the board, the board's more or less approval of the T-type turnaround versus a circular, because we've been back and forth on that. That's where we planned it, I think the board's comfortable with that. You want the, definitely want the emergency access, I concur with that, I'd suggest that you keep it, strongly keep it. But the gate out nearest the road, Dodge Road, that's near the layout, if there's a parking problem that's set in front of the gate, that's the town's responsibility to take it or tow them away. It's their responsibility to maintain that road from the end of it out to the gate, which they're talked, you know, talked about doing. And it's better to have it there, you know, 355 days a year, even if, you know, we have a catastrophic storm or something that you can't plow out for two days, can't get it clear. But you've got it. So those, those items, another one that he suggested, that I think was the fire chief, was the one-way loop of driveway B, and we went through this many, you know, many iterations of the plans, we've arrived at that, they've increased the outside radius coming around the sharp turn, they've increased the width from 16 to 20 feet on the plan. And I'm 100% comfortable with that, and I think they're looking to see if the board is also comfortable with that before we go and talk to the fire chief. I think those are the three main items, and the rest of them are widths and radiuses and things which we can.
We already agreed to do them in the side, in the side, which as well.
Well, you have it in one way, it controls, it takes the confusion.
I don't think it's a problem, and.
Yeah.
It's a very short street, I mean, it's.
It's very short, it's not like.
500 feet from one end to the other.
Do the right thing.
I have a reason to go every which way.
We're trying to make that.
Surprise, listen.
If you didn't do that, if you didn't do that, remember you'd be back to having a lollipop at the end of that.
No, let's, let's not, let's not go there.
Why are you going to go?
I mean, I think we have aesthetic considerations all along that we've taken into account.
And I will know that, because we widened it.
And impervious area issues taken into account.
Right.
And at the same time accommodating overflow parking. Even though the parking is sufficient, you have two garages, you can fit two each. But still, under the understanding that because of some of the tight spaces, they're going to receive visitors, and you need to accommodate the visitors.
Right.
Larry, what else?
That's all. I think that it would be really beneficial if Katrina perhaps could set up a meeting here at Town Hall with the water departments, the police chief, the fire chief, herself, myself, and at least one planning board member, perhaps could make that meeting, and their team, and just shake all these things out. Because I know they're anxious to either submit the plans that they revised, or tweak them a little bit, and submit them to me, and get this part of the process concluded.
No, and I give a lot of credence to the input from police and fire, I mean, typically, they're the ones that have to live with the design. There was a little talk about, I don't know, it was something about a gate access to the parking lot?
Now, that was between the two parking lots, but the board decided at the last meeting, you weren't going to do that anyway, between golf and presidential, so that's.
That's not an outstanding, because Katrina brought it up as a potential outstanding issue from the last meeting.
No, it was already, it's already off the table.
Well, she had in the, in her package.
It was the minute statement, they must have missed it.
So any other comments from the board, so we can give guidance here, and I guess take a, kind of a, get a consensus vote here?
Well, I agree with what Larry said, to summarize it.
I think that's why we're.
I agree with the way it went around the table.
Right.
Okay, so then we'll go forward tomorrow.
I'll be glad to show up at that meeting, as long as it's in my schedule.
And I think all of these departments understand that not everyone can get what they want. I mean, police and fire are looking for, at only safety issues, and the planning board is charged with balancing all the issues.
Right, and that's, they have missed some of that balance.
Well, that's why we had the discussion when we just had, so.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
So you want me to set up that meeting, and so it won't happen tomorrow because there's no rush, no?
There is.
Well, no, there is a rush. We want to get them.
Why do you say there's no rush?
Yeah, we definitely would, if they could be tomorrow, we would be.
Fire chief talked about tomorrow, but that's going to be kind of tough.
I mean, I query whether or not we need to meet really with, I think, all together, I think that that's going to be an issue. I, I don't know how productive that will be. So I think that for tomorrow's purposes, we would like to go over, start with the fire chief, and at the same time, when we resolve the fire chief's comments, basically, the police chief is only echoing that, which is necessary for the fire. So once we resolve fire, we really resolve police. So then we'll talk to the police.
I wouldn't make that presumption.
Well, no, it's pretty, because.
A lot of the comments were the same.
They weren't identical, identical.
And the police on the lock was talking, and he was more worried about the fire department than.
No, the presumption, I didn't mean the comments, I meant the presumption that police chief couldn't add or didn't want to be at the meeting.
No, I'm not saying that we wouldn't communicate with them, I'm just, I think we're saying that if we can meet with the fire department tomorrow.
Because he wants, they want to do that.
That would be great. He's available.
He's available.
I'm available, at least in the morning tomorrow, so.
And I'm in the office, so you can just call me, and I can, I can show up to that meeting.
Do you have a time?
I don't.
Twelve.
I don't, but.
He talked to you, did he tell you what time the fire chief?
No, but he said he, he thinks he could be available tomorrow, so I'm in by eight, seven thirty or eight, so I can just follow that.
What time do you think?
I can do, anytime up until, like, 11, I've got, I've got to be in Georgetown for the whole afternoon, I've got a seminar.
So would you possibly think, if you can try and see for the morning, that'd be beautiful?
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll meet with the water department, and we'll coordinate with Katrina and Larry to do that. Like, it's just, it's very, it's so hard for us to get every board together.
No, no, that just.
Okay, thank you.
We need to take that off one by one, do that.
The fire department's been asking for this meeting.
Is Friday a good fallback day? Tomorrow, that work?
Yeah, okay.
Are you in on Friday?
Oh, it's wonderful, it's my day.
I was going to say, I didn't think you were Friday.
No, that's fine.
It's okay.
She can adjust it. Who's your boss?
I appreciate you folks letting me get my stuff over with.
Any other questions you have for Larry, or anybody that's here? Before you leave? Your chance.
Grab Larry now. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. And again, these are all public documents, feel free to read them, cross-reference and whatever.
Did you give the big copy of the documents to Larry? You can have, you want to take?
I do, I brought a copy.
Take the larger documents? I wish you had a big one.
Let's wait until after we meet with the fire department.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure you had one.
And the fire department. All right, so the board should be referring to the Jill's packet that refers to the CR.
Well, did you address the conservation commission's last memo?
Oh, I know, that's what I have to do first.
That's why, the one that just came in at 5:00 P.M.
I know, but I have to write, I have to read that into the public bracket, sorry.
I have, yeah, I am.
Your answer would be, play one as they walk.
I know.
You know, sometimes you just have to smudge.
Because who, what?
I better move back.
This works well.
It's awesome.
If you.
Can you summarize the points?
I did summarize them in mine, if you wanted to. I gave, like, his general comments.
Sorry. What happened?
It's not easy.
Well, I just want to also, you know, summarize the fact that this did derive from, I guess, an input from the tax conservation restrictions being given to the board, and Brent collecting, you know, input from his board.
Right.
So this is not just a narrative, it summarizes also the feeling of the board itself, I mean, the commission, sorry. So, the seven points, I'm going to have to go through them quickly, I have to to the record. The Raleigh Conservation Commission offers the following, well, first of all.
It did just let you show it, just then.
Trust the up arrow, it's an override.
It's a refrigerator. Did you get the floor up?
No, I didn't. Just in general, because I guess a few people here that interested parties, Jill Mann knows a lot about conservation restrictions, I know more now than Rich, but in general, it's a document which a landowner or grantor, legal terms, now I'm just going to convey its interest to a qualified conservation organization, public agency known as a grantee, and so, but the grantee in the case of, for Raleigh Country Club would be the conservation commission.
It's actually the town.
The town, yeah, yeah. But anyways, basically what it does is forego and limit future development and use of the property or preserve conservation values, that also tie into a particular feature of the parcel in question, which here is a golf course that's been around, and obviously is a form of open space, and has a lot of features within it, such as the ponds, while it's distant and something. So, the golf course is amongst many, in other cases, it could be watershed protection, you know, farmland, agricultural land, et cetera. So, the, maybe one way of doing it, Katrina, is, I don't know, the letter, we're on the website.
What do you read?
Give it a rest, you had time.
I gave you the, this version, it's easier to read in the additional.
No, I don't care.
He doesn't want, read it.
I'm just trying to.
It is on the website though, isn't it?
No, I'm taking the recommendation from the board. Does the board want me to read it?
No, I mean, isn't the main, well, one of the main points is, they are requesting that they, the conservation commission and the applicant interact, basically get together and hash out the terms of the conservation.
Yeah, towards the end, and we'll go into this, towards the end, that the commission is in a position with their expertise and knowledge of the open space parcels and towns including this one over time.
Has a lot of knowledge about this particular property, because they.
Yeah, and, and also in their interaction with the state, and you have that as well, to get it, what is it, the, what is it?
The EO.
EO, yeah, what is it, what's it, the standard for energy?
Executive.
Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Fair, so, which is the ultimate approval body.
Right.
It's actually.
With the secretary there.
The Division of Wildlife and Fisheries does the review, and then they submit it, and then they approve it.
But the format, I'm talking about the process itself, the legal template, application process, et cetera, which is a formal process.
Oh, yeah.
Which is also available, you know, when you go to state websites, and you can actually show the template, I mean, Katrina sent that to us, you know, some of this information from the state, that actually gives a template, you know, that the conservation helps the applicant follow within their own knowledge, you know, that applies to this parcel. And that's what we have to get into, but we're recognizing that we're not going to, we're going to do more listening tonight than deciding.
Oh, you, you.
We have to give guidance.
Yeah, you can't, you can't decide.
Well, wait a minute.
We're going to give guidance in terms of what we want, whether we can go for, we want a permanent, you know, restriction according to our bylaw, versus a 30-year with extensions until 2020.
And also maybe define what is a perpetual restriction.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so that's the guidance we have to give, and that's, I think you know that at this point.
Well, I'm going to explain why you can't really, why you can absolutely have a perpetual restriction.
Well, the other thing, I'll get back to, I think, the point I was trying to make, that the TownCom wants to be able to sit down with the applicant's people, applicant's team, and work out the details of the CR, which to me seems to be an excellent suggestion. I mean, it's very, it's a very reasonable request for them to make, considering the fact that they're going to be holding the restrictions, so, I mean, it seems to me they ought to have a lot of say, and I think frankly, they have more expertise in these matters than we do, so.
I'd say.
Therefore, I am going to read the first paragraph anyways. The Raleigh Conservation Commission appreciates our thorough review, the proposed conservation restriction and public trail easement hereafter, known as the CR, at the request of the planning board, as part of the permitting process. The Raleigh Conservation Commission is the principal municipal board typically designated as the grantee of a conservation restriction. The Raleigh Conservation Commission therefore has a longstanding experience in the conservation restriction process and is called upon to recommend municipal certification if it is so warranted. The Raleigh Conservation Commission feels the potential opportunity exists on this property to craft a conservation restriction to benefit the town, the town by protection of valuable natural resources, provide public access to our citizens. This would allow enjoyment of those protected resources while at the same time preserving the aesthetics of the expansive green space framed by the mature wetlands. The proposed CR submitted for our review is in general substance of natural resource protection, contains only non-specific public access, and is accompanied by plans which should not specifically depict protected viewscapes in sense of natural resource. And then accordingly, the recommendations are in line with that preamble. All right, so I just put that in. Now, all right, Jill.
So what about that? Will you sit down with them and?
And I'm going to explain, I don't have.
Jill's got a lot of work, so I always.
I don't have a problem sitting down with them, but they have no jurisdiction. It's like I started explaining Katrina, we have nothing that we're before them for, so it would be completely informal, it's completely not, it's, I cannot tell you how unimportant, there's nothing to it.
It's just like the fire chief.
It's less, it's less, because there's no health and safety protection, so in the back, when you look at zoning, the main purpose is only to protect the safety and health of participants, and when, with a CR, in particular with CR for open space, I've done, I've done these before, and there's not much discretion. It is what it is. What he's asking for is, is as if it's a brand new, a brand new property with a proposed use that has never been in effect, that we can go in and create, access and create, create parcels that he can use and protections, and he wants to notice, like, there's nothing, we're not doing anything, we're saying to you, take it, we're not going to touch anything that has never been touched before, because this is your bylaw. Your bylaw controls how we need to handle open space. Number one, we can only operate the golf course in those areas that are previously disturbed. Now, that would have been, like, assume we were trying to do this OSRD, and it was on a completely bald piece of land that had never been used, was all forested, we would have to give us a waiver to be able to do anything on that property, because you cannot disturb an area that's not already been disturbed. disturb an area that's not already been disturbed. So we've said to you, we're not touching anything, in your OSRD decision, say, you cannot alter anything, and we've done that, and we've shown it when we do our, remember when we did our relocations of seven and eight, the green and the T? We can't create pathways without actually crossing wetland and impinging upon buffer and actually destroying habitat, let alone preserving habitat. There's no way to make a trail. You can see it, and what I did do, because I had not done this, and I promised Katrina I would, and Rich did it for me, was I took, I'll go through the other kind of restrictions, but what I did was I took, we took the pre and post conditions, who, I'm sorry, in your package, and I showed you, and I, and Rich purposely kept all of the wetland restrictions in.
Back there, these plans she's talking about right now.
Yeah, they can come up too, but is that just a really, it's up to you, really. So what I tried to show is, here is the existing condition as it is, here are all the jurisdictional areas. We're saying to you, this, and I reflected in my CR, this is, if you will, the bylaw. What I've modified, what is modified, is all that can ever be modified. And this is more restrictive, more controlling on the open space parcel, because I'm telling you, I can't touch it.
You can't touch what?
Anything that hasn't been disturbed. If I wanted to move a green, I can only move green onto a fairway. I can't move the green onto an upland that's never been touched. I can't, I can't go anywhere other than the areas that have already been disturbed.
You can't do this because the CR says that?
Because your bylaw says that.
Well, but that's.
Well, in your decisions.
We'd like to have that in the CR.
Oh, and you will, you will, I put it in. That's why I said to you, I took all of the comments and reflected them, that's why I'm more than willing to do it.
Well, I, I don't know, I really feel that they could make this.
Can I ask a question?
I was hoping you would come tonight, I mean, I was hoping you would come.
That wouldn't, that would be good.
It sounds like you may be afraid that they will ask for more than you've already proposed.
Oh, I'm not afraid of it, I'm just telling you that we.
Well, that's why you're reluctant to agree with it.
No, we're reluctant to agree with it, because we can't afford the time delay.
Well, I was gonna say.
It will be months, and you know what, we can't do it. We're more than willing to meet with them informally, because there's no, nothing formal about anything they can give us. It's you, only you, have the control.
What do you mean by informally?
Because there's, we're not in front of them for anything.
Well, I think that's what we're suggesting, informally.
But we, oh, I mean, if they would, if, that would be Brent.
You're talking about us going to meet with Brent?
We can only meet with Brent, because again.
I mean, that's between Brent and the commission in terms of what it would be, just with Brent or with the commission, you know, you would need to find that out, I think.
But also the scope of what, in fact, they are able, most certainly what are they able to even ask for, is exceptionally limited, because we can't.
I mean, we could even set up an informal meeting with Brent, a member of this board, or, you know.
That we can do it, as long as there's no quorum.
Why can't you meet with the commission?
Yeah, why can't you?
We, we, we're not in front of them for anything, they have no jurisdiction.
But, and you can meet with, go to a meeting informally too, right?
Sure, of course you can.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we could, just show up, sure.
No problem with a quorum. Maybe the planning board could send them to the Conservation Commission with parameters and say, ask the Conservation Commission, we actually like what they've proposed in terms of public access, can you work within these and work with them and change other things, because you don't want them to be asking for lots of them.
Well, they can't, basically, they can't, there's nothing here that we're willing to change, because we can't. I mean, there's, we can't change anything other, or we change our golf course.
Jill, this is, in respect to this latest one that you wrote.
Oh, I changed, I know, I changed a lot of things, because in.
I mean, I think this.
Yeah, the one that's in my package.
There has to be some kind of sit-down it seems to make.
And that's why, again, I was hoping.
Between them and, and the planning board representative.
Possibly, yeah, the members of the planning board could go to that meeting too.
I would go any time, I would, I would prefer if Brent got comments, like, I realize Brent submitted a list, he didn't give me any concrete comments, none, because, for example, he said the CR is not enforceable because of the types of provisions that were included, and so did you pick it, and with all due respect.
No, that's, that's her first take.
But, but I don't think she, it's totally, it's wrong. I, I've done them before, and I've had limited declarations with regard to the resources, and it's been approved. And with regard to Turner Hill, the prohibitions and permissions are almost identical to Turner Hills. And I did that on purpose, because I wanted the board to be able to rely on an example that was true, accurate, and had been adopted, because there aren't many of these where you have an existing passive recreational use, such as golf, there aren't. Most of them that I've done.
Bradford Country Club?
I didn't, Bradford's not a, 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 a restriction, because that's pretty old, that's from the 90s. I didn't, I mean, I have not solicited at all, I have not.
Right, bring it up, unless people assure about what they're talking about, it's being used as a possible analogy such.
I had no idea.
Like, Turner Hill was the one that came.
Turner, really?
Because the extensive work that was done from the development stage, from the beginning to the end of that project.
But why I liked their CR, honestly, was because Larry has a frame of reference for it, so it was, it was a great model to use, it had been adopted, it had been approved, it was a golf course, and Larry's very familiar with it.
Sure.
So it made it a great example to, to use. But if we go through it, so, again, we can meet informally before the board, but they, but from reading Brent's comments, he is clearly in an attempt to get things that, quite frankly, are never gonna happen. I, I, I'm trying to be honest. He wants me to put in trails, he wants me to provide public access, he wants me to give specific times, he wants me to create non-disturbed areas, he wants me to.
Well, then it's very. I guess he wants to, the same discussions that we've had would be over the past whatever month.
I was gonna say, that's an invitation for dialogue.
Right.
You have to take it as such.
And I don't mind the invitation to dialogue.
Those are the same things that we've discussed with you, and for the most part, I think you persuaded us to back off on some of those things, but, you know, they haven't been privy to these discussions, and I just think, you know, you can't expect the Conservation Commission to hold the restriction and be responsible for this without them having some input. And they do have greater expertise in this than we do, so.
I understand.
Jill, I mean, in our conversation, I said that.
And I explained to you that I'm more than willing to talk to Brent, and I have no issue, it's just appearing before the board, I feel like, it's, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I feel like it's, it's an invitation to just.
To go in circles, you want me to?
Yeah, I just, I, we just keep, we don't have time to go in circles, and I am trying, I cannot tell you how hard I'm trying to frame a conservation restriction that addresses it all, and, and I took, tonight, I took every one of his comments, and I went through each of them.
Okay, you've made that point, but you need to make the point with Brent, with the Conservation Commission.
And I.
In my opinion.
And I'm more than, again, I'm more than happy to meet with him, but to meet with the board, I would prefer to be through him.
And some of us will be there, and if we think that they're asking for too much, then we'll tell them that, you know, this is what we've determined, that, you know.
But when is even their next meeting?
I think it's actually next Tuesday, but I think it would be too soon.
Oh, it would have, it would have to be Tuesday, because then it would be in December, and.
Why, why wouldn't, could it be Tuesday?
They, they will kill us, because.
You don't know their intent, or it could be Tuesday.
To wait an entire month and a half.
This is an informal.
To wait a month and a half for the CR, they will, they will basically kill the project. If I have to wait a month and a half for a CR.
It's not any final.
What do you mean for the state?
To wait a month and a half?
I mean, for the state to approve it.
You're just looking for recommendations.
Oh, for the state, it'll be six months after they approve the issue.
Well, that's, that's part of the issue before the board, I mean, in terms of.
Like, if this board is waiting to hear their input?
Let's say that, okay, but we're not, I agree with Cliff, and I, I said that too, I mean, and Brent made it clear, made clear, the Conservation Commission, when they give this kind of input, aside from, you know, the point-by-point, which probably could be condensed, and also.
I did, I can go.
They need to be, his general statements have to be applicable to what we've already achieved towards getting our special permit in this project, you know, I mean, he's not really privy to what we are.
Right.
But you need to explain that to him, and, and like, Cliff.
You're right, there needs to be a dialogue.
Yeah, and you can do that with Brent, and then if Brent, even on the phone, or he's come in, or if he's here tomorrow, set up, tomorrow someone's coming in, much for the fire department.
I'm more than willing to talk to Brent about it.
And say, hey, you know, do you think I need to come to a meeting? I mean, it's kinda, you know, because this is really important. It puts us a little bit in a, in a conundrum, in the sense that, I know you wanna try to convince us, but we, this has to be a permanent conservation restriction.
It is.
In which you're trying to save time in the state process or risk, from your, you know, that it won't be approved. Do we have a fallback plan as a board, if we write a special permit that incorporates language that's contingent on an approved conservation restriction?
Well, you do, because your, your bylaw doesn't permit you to force, the way it works in, as far as, as far as permits, and you probably already know this, a board cannot impose on an applicant the requirement that a third party approve anything inside the permit. And that's what this CR is. You, you are actually saying to an applicant, no matter what you agree to, no matter what you do, if the EEOA does not agree, then you can't have your permit. That is a completely and wholly unenforceable condition.
Well, I don't know about that, but.
Away is, trust me.
What we've, no, I'm not gonna trust you.
A third party, you can't do it.
What we've done in the past is, is we've issued the permit.
Yes.
But we've, we've said, we've said a deadline, well, not a deadline, but you can't do certain work.
A guideline.
No, you, there's a condition that you can't do certain work, and I'm not sure exactly how we word it, it could have been, you can't even build the first unit until the, until the CR is approved by the state and recorded in the registry. I don't think that's.
Did you do that with Wild Country?
Yes, I believe we did, I think we did, it was.
To look at that, did you look at the permit from?
No, but I'm shocked that they accepted the condition, because it's all.
Who accepted the condition?
The, the, yeah, because it's, you depend on, I mean, I think the EEOA would accept this, I really do.
Well, they.
But at the same time, that you're, you're, a conservation restriction is a totally different kind of restriction. When, when you're, when you read your bylaws, we're required to do it in perpetuity, we want to, we wanna give it to you in perpetuity, it's done, we have no contest about that, at all. I mean, and I've demonstrated that by giving the CR.
With wording that covers your town.
The thing is with the, because when you do, when we give you a restriction, we will grant it to you in perpetuity. The law says, and I included it, because Katrina had asked me, so what I had done was I gave you the law. The law says, if you put in a restriction, it's only enforceable for 30 years, okay, if it's in perpetuity, unless you extend. I.
This is Plan B we're talking about.
Yes, only Plan B. Plan A is, I want the conservation restriction, I want the burden.
We all do.
Plan B is that, you know, if God forbid, the EEOA for some demented reason doesn't want land, which I can't imagine, then you, you still have an effect, a restriction that's good for 30 years, that's completely binding in perpetuity against the grantor. The grantor has no unilateral right to dismantle the restriction, none, none.
Right.
I mean, that was the intent of state when they came up with conservation.
And that's what we want, but this.
Yeah, that means a 30 or 40-year-old law, almost.
Which one?
No, I'm just saying that CR, you know, CR.
Oh, 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 but this, my point is more.
Go back, but I'm saying that the intent was to give towns a tool.
Which one is perpetual?
The, the.
The state approves CR.
Both are, against.
No, the 30-year one is not perpetual.
You're, you are wrong against us, you are right that you have to take an action.
Right.
But against us, it is perpetual. There's no party who is, yes, there's no party who is a grantor to a restriction that has the right, if you choose to extend prior to the 30-year expiration, they can contest that.
Right, well, that's the key there, so.
But that's the point.
In my mind, it's not perpetual.
Well, I, I don't debate in your mind it isn't, but it is perpetual.
The town could miss the deadline, the town could decide for whatever reason not to continue the restriction.
But my point is, is.
Which would be contrary to the board's decision.
Right, but in terms of what is reasonable and enforceable, and as far as the condition goes, an applicant's willingness to incur a perpetual restriction and to say to you, look, we want the CR, we'll do whatever it takes to get the CR, to go forward with language as long as it doesn't damage the operation of the golf course, but if for some reason, somebody, you know, the gods are against us and they deny it, we'll give you the other CR, because we're willing to give you whatever it is you need to keep this in perpetuity, because that's our ability. Now, that's what we can do, that's all we can do, and.
Right, which makes sense in terms of the thing.
That's, I'm not saying we want the CR, we wouldn't have been spending all this time trying to get it.
Well, intention doesn't really matter, I mean, it's whether, whether this is gonna, the land is gonna be permanently protected, because if it's not going to be, I'm not gonna vote to approve the project, and.
But that's the intent of the bylaw.
That's the intent of the bylaw, because we don't want to allow you to cluster all these homes in one section, one portion of the property, and then find out, you know, 20 years later, that the 40B development, the other.
Or, or even subdivide the rest of it.
Right, whatever.
But that's our point, why we say to you, intent does matter, and we are willing to expose this property to a restriction in perpetuity.
Why don't we get this in a form that's approvable?
I'm, I have, what I've given you.
Well, not yet, but I mean, you have to run that by.
I can tell you right now that if I talk to Amanda Boy, it's a division, and you tell me to go forward and talk to her, because you have to direct me, this has everything that a conservation restriction that I have on record, that I got approved, has.
We have to direct you?
Pardon?
We have to direct you to do that?
Yeah, because you have to approve it, I can't submit it without your approval.
Oh, what's, well, so we need, this process.
You have, you have an application that you.
Yeah, no, I know that.
I printed the.
I can't do a thing.
I printed the 26 pages out, was looking at it.
Oh, God, that is a dense application, it's like, well, just anything over and over again.
No, it all is different facets of it, it's not, some of its guidelines and teaching.
I think we're all saying that you need to have a dialogue with the Conservation Commission and.
And we'll do that, but you need to go through this conservation restriction with me, so that we can talk about some of the things he raises, that I cannot, I, I can, I'm gonna tell you how to respond.
That's why you can.
Because I don't wanna go to him and say, you know, the, I don't know your input, and it'd be simple to go through.
No, this is like.
We don't have to go through Judy's stuff, because she's just talking about the perpetual development. Okay, I gave it to you, just because I figured I should run that.
Now, this comes out of your packet.
The newly revised one is somewhere here?
Yep, it's, oh, is it, do you see it? Yes, yes.
And it goes to page nine.
And this is with the.
It goes to page nine, right, Jill?
Yeah, and, and you have these plans that go with it, that are in your package, in your.
What, in this big one here?
Yep, no, in the little one, in your behind.
Oh, they're right here, yeah.
Exactly, you see it? Yep, got it.
You were.
I tell you, I'm a little tired today.
Big grounds manager.
Okay, so basically, I started on that number 10, and it just says, you know, appears on the face of it that Brent says, you know, he, he's okay with using golf courses as an open space, that was basically his final paragraph, subject to these, these conditions. And it says, his comment is, it contains only nonspecific public access and does not depict protected usecape-sensitive natural resources. And my response was, access issues are discussed below, because he brings that up. And then I said, basically, I don't know what he, and I had to talk to him, I depict everything I'm, I'm gonna depict, because I depict all of the existing conditions, I, everything's there, I show the golf course, I show the wetland protection areas, I, I show the jurisdictional areas, I show it. I show the wetlands, I show the uplands, they're there, and they're shown on the plan. I show what, what we're gonna change, and, and post-development.
He wasn't referring to these plans, the only plans he was looking at were the site plans, the.
Right, but I said, I'm saying to this board, I've got him, I'm attaching him, I'll send him, I have to still address all those comments, so I'm gonna send him.
It's all kinda wrong, all right now, it's all kinda.
And, and there are, in that plan set, there are, they all do show, but this is it, and I show everything for him now. And then, basically, he, he said, he basically was saying that, where was it? Oh, there's nonspecific public access, and my point was, it's because it's a golf course and I can't give it, I mean, I can only do what I can do. I, I, the access I'll give is when the golf course is closed, the public come in and they can walk on those cart paths.
Well, the, again, this is the discussion we've had.
Yeah, no, I know, so I'm just going through his comments, and that's how I'm gonna respond to them, and then I basically just cited, you know, what your section for your OSRD, and your OSRD clearly says that it's for, you know, the promotion of attractive standards of appearance, and what it really is for is to allow a cluster subdivision and to have open space, and you can use a golf course, I just cited it back. And then he basically said, the town needs to be adequately protected by a permanent restriction, which we kinda talked about, and he said, the commission recommends the planning board support and affirm the requirement for OSRD projects to qualify as, to qualify as a conservation restriction that obtains state approval, this must be permanent and perpetual, which it is, for the protection of land, water, and public recreational use too. too, and it is, the restriction clearly states, and if you go to the restriction itself, where is it, I actually did add some stuff, because remember we talked about it.
So go to which page, please?
Oh, I'm on the front page, this was something that Cliff and I had actually spoken about, I needed to give it to an entity separate from the entity that's gonna be the declarant, if you will, so we are just gonna call it, the Raleigh Golf LLC will be the holder of the restricted land, and that'll be the entity that'll hold and grant a restrictive covenant, so, or conservation restriction, and that's what I provide for. And then basically, what I also had said was, this, this form, this whole first page is basically exactly what Turner Hill does, what I've done before in a project where I have a conservation restriction in Middleton too, that's, this is the statutory one. And then he said, you know, under the OSRD regulations, the open space has to be subject to, oh, that's done, and I just went through and I said, it's noteworthy to mention, because Brent acts like this is not the right form, that these are really modeled after two examples that were approved, and I attached the conservation restriction for, for the Turner Hill Golf Course in your package, just so that you'd have it, because I wasn't sure, I knew Cliff had it, but I wasn't 100% sure everybody did, okay. Then, you know, they wanted directly communicate with the proposed, you know, regarding the language, and I said, provision, I can't speak, but the petition is willing to work to create a CR that's beneficial and will submit the form, it's just that we would like the commission, I mean, the board, to at least tell us, yeah, this is a good form, submit it to the Conservation Commission, let's get comments and then go back. And what I did do is add a couple of things to the prohibited uses that we can go through in a minute. I didn't understand this comment he had, he said, the proposed CR does not adequately describe the qualities of the property to potentially qualify it for RCC and state approval of permanent conservation restriction. The reason why I totally didn't get it is because the conservation restrictions are eligible for public recreational use, and that includes golf courses, because you can get a tax abatement for a public golf course, they have them all over the place, and they consider it to be under sixty-one B land, you can actually get that, they're considered conservation recreational land that is entitled to benefits.
No, but here's where talking to him.
So I didn't understand what that meant.
And accident uses can be related to some of his concerns about potential fertile pools, you know, wetland areas that should remain undisturbed.
And they will.
To the extent that they impact the grounds and maintenance plan and best practices to, in other words, it kind of relates it, that, you know, this is not a golf course that is devoid of these kind of values.
Absolutely not, it's just that it's.
So he's looking for more specific wording in that regard, that's all.
Right, but it's in the, and we do say that we're gonna continue to operate in its present form, I can comply with all laws, including, you know, environmental, and there's nothing, we can't, he said, make this a green plan, you know, do this, do that, a green plan will cost a million dollars.
A green plan?
Yeah, when, yeah, what they'll do for golf courses is you'll come in and you'll turn it into a green golf course, where you have solar energy, where you have, you collect.
Lead certification for the golf courses.
It's impossible to do with an older golf course, you can't do it, with a public golf course, pardon?
It's through the Audubon, some Audubon organization, not the Audubon.
It's unbelievable.
It can still make sure that what's incorporated is the best management.
And we do, and obviously, he's been fine with it, because we haven't been issued any, you know, types of orders, we had some issues before, they went in, they corrected, and they operate presently.
Yeah, it's better than it was, there were issues, yeah.
Yeah, and they haven't been since, and they've operated consistent with the requirements of the town and the Board of Health.
All right, so what did you add, you only added, you added two things.
Where are you, you under three?
Number four you added, unless such cutting or removal was necessary.
Yeah, I took, actually took that out of the form that's on the website.
And then you added number six.
And then I said, yep, I said, okay, prohibited, you know, the operation, storage, parking, maintenance, snowmobiles, motor vehicles, anything, we're not gonna let people go in and snowmobile through, you know, except obviously, it's a golf course, so we have maintenance vehicles all the time, to drive through, you know, bring sand to the sand traps, fertilize, I mean, they go through, you have aerators, you have the whole thing, so I just said that equipment obviously can still be used. And then what I did do, and this is one of Judy's comments, and it kind of relates to Brent's, that I said, you know, only, only accident activity is gonna be allowed in restricted areas that are already disturbed, and that kind of goes back to your comment, Kurt, where you said, you know, look, you can't have activities in the jurisdictional areas, and we're saying to you, to the extent they never have been activities in those jurisdictional areas, we're not going in them, because if it's not disturbed, we're not touching them. But again, you keep, there's already activity there, it's done, the fairways are cut, the holes are done, the greens are done, the paths are in.
Again, I think he's looking for specificity as to future plants in the disturbed areas to make sure that.
And there are.
That refers to what is there, what you plan to put there, and how that relates to what is not gonna.
And unfortunately.
Expand, because you can arguably say that.
Oh, I know what I.
The disturbed, there's more disturbed area, you need to define it, because you do have a country club, you do have parking screens, you do have.
And I did define it earlier.
Yeah, that's all.
And what I did, because I knew that this was gonna end up being one of the issues, is I added, so this is, did you notice it's two-sided, because I don't know, because I did add a lot of language, so in order to ensure that we, we comply, try to beef up the language, I added, you know, the information that was on page two in section eight, moreover, the restricted area comprised part of scenic landscape associated with a natural, open, safe-based environment and an integral component of the residential development approved by the OSRD, the limitation of the use to an operation of golf course, and I basically said this, limitation, the use of the golf course or the passive recreational use, will further protect and enhance the area's scenic, open space attributes and the recreational human enjoyment and ecological value contained in the restricted area. I mean, so I'm trying to add back in this verbiage that everybody wants, and in addition to that, I said, look, we acknowledge that the condition is gonna be perpetual, remember how we asked to make sure it was gonna be perpetual, so I added that language in there.
Which might help it be approved, this is not like it's a bad.
No, and then I also put in, because this was the point, I think that, this is where you, it was on the back part of the page, so I tried to double side, the OSRD decision requires certain conditions, so obviously, some things have to go into the OSRD, and I put in that the preservation of open space was required, and it said, I said in it, in the event the owner of restricted area abandons the use of restricted areas of golf course for twenty-four consecutive months, the uses of restricted areas should be limited to passive recreational uses, which are defined below, which are trails, non-motorized activities, and whatever else you would see fit to do.
No, that's a good provision, I was gonna bring that up.
So I put that in.
Why did you, I just curious why you decided to put that in?
The twenty-four, because, you know what, it didn't even occur to me, it wasn't there. It is there.
It's a concern with it.
It was in there, but it wasn't in there with enough specificity in my mind.
I brought it up to you that it wasn't there.
And it was my, well, it is kind of, but it wasn't specific enough, it wasn't, and that's why.
What happens if the golf course goes down?
And it should have been in there, that's my, you know, I take responsibility for it not being in.
Well, that's why it's drafted.
Yep, and then we also put in, you know, we said that, look, usually in these, in these restrictions, you'll have a baseline plan, and I didn't have, I didn't reference baseline plan, so what I had done was I referred to the baseline plan as these, and it's in here, so now, when you look at the conservation restriction, what it says is, okay, there's a certain baseline, you see what's disturbed, I can't disturb anymore, if it's not disturbed on these plans and I haven't done something, then I can't do it. So that's what it refers to, that's why these are important, because when the, when the division actually reviews, they have to have something, a survey, that they can evaluate and review and accept, here's my baseline, so now, if you do a change, I have to get permission to do the change, even when I'm relocating, I have to make everybody aware of it.
Where does it say that?
It's in the document, oh, yeah, no, it's in there, we'll go through it, so if I make a change, they know about it, I can't, it's only to disturbed areas and because it's all, basically, it's also all subject to the conservation, because everything's jurisdictional, everything, back there, I don't think there's anything that's not within the hundred percent. Then this stuff, I just added the provision. Oh, and then I wanted to talk to you about this one, because Katrina actually and I had had a conversation offline one night, or afternoon, I think after the site walk, is, okay, Joe, you're gonna maintain the golf course, and by the way, these specific provisions that allow us to act are verbatim from Turner Hill, this was the stuff that everybody said, oh, they'll never approve it, verbatim from Turner Hill, because I truly didn't know what to put in for a conservation restriction for a golf course, so I took it all. And then, now, after having talked with Katrina, it occurred to me, okay, and then also from Brent's comments, because Brent said, you know, how do we know what you're gonna change, where you're gonna change it, how are you gonna change it, good point, Brent, let me make more certain what's gonna happen, just saying, and Kurt actually brought this up, just saying, well, I'm not gonna make any changes other than what's in the disturbed areas insufficient, so what I did was, I said, okay, we're only gonna make changes within those disturbed areas, but in addition to that, this is the only thing we can do, and I said, okay, can we, and this is for the board's discussion, can we acquire a budding land, and can we merge that property then into the restricted area in order to improve and expand the golf course, provided the conservation restrictions show continue to remain in full force and effect? So basically, here's my golf course, if, I have no plans on doing this, nobody's, nobody's saying.
We have to cover the town, we have to cover it.
If there was a big parcel here, and this guy said, hey, I can make an eighteen hole golf course, which is a heck of a lot nicer, now this is an eighteen than a nine, I can't do it unless you tell me I can do it, so that's why I'm saying.
So where's that language you're talking about?
It's on page four.
Page four, eh?
I double sided, so I was trying to miss conservation, I tried.
They're used to it.
Oh, you do the same?
Make a board.
Right now.
Too much paper.
The document was ninety-six pages, and that was without the additional information.
So process generates too much paper.
Really?
I try to do everything electronically, but it's a broom.
I assume they're gonna be forbidding.
I wanted you to put on. Jill, on B?
Yeah, oh, yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna go there now, I didn't know.
Hey, people can read that, but I, you know, that.
Okay, for.
That would be subject to all, you know.
The only reason.
Current rules and regulations.
Yeah, and that's, and this is, the reason why I didn't put it in is because it's actually in the first sentence, yeah, it's the very first intro paragraph, says I'm subject to all zoning, but the reason why we said, expand the operation services of clubhouse, including unlimited food and beverage services, because right now, it's a, it's a non-alcoholic, and we want to bring a seasonal beer and wine, it's a golf course, the players like to come off, have a beer, so we would like to be able to do that, obviously, we have to get a permit to do that or a license, but I'm telling you that that's something we could do, because it would be an expansion, and in my mind, I need to tell you that, and Katrina and I discussed it as well.
If you wanna make it something like Park Corners and put a tower.
Is there enough parking?
Oh, there's so much.
We've gone through the park.
And then what I said was, and to expand the footprint of the existing structure, it's not necessary that I may, to Katrina's point, I'm not necessarily gonna take, you know, the building and double it, or, you know, three-quarter, whatever, not quite double, right, but it could be that I add a deck, it could be that I add a tent, it could be that it's something, but in order to do that, I still have to tell you, and if the effect is a change in the footprint, i.e. the ability to have people there, you need to know about it, you have to approve it, because it's a change, I'm increasing my use.
The CBA would probably have to approve it too.
They do, they do, because it's an expansion of a, I think it might be an expansion of a non-conforming use, and I just have to look at it a little bit more, I'm uncertain, because this project, it's permitted by special permit, it used to be permitted by right. Now, I'm not so sure if it's, if it's considered a pre-existing, non-conforming, because it doesn't have a special permit, or those rules don't apply, I don't know.
But that doesn't need to be in here, but subject.
If a special permit is now required, it is non-conforming.
I still would have to do it though, I have, no matter what, I still have to go and get it.
That's what I'm saying, as long as it's in here, like any lease language, whatever is in language that's subject.
This only gives me the right to ask, it doesn't give me the right to do it.
Right.
Yes.
And the burden's on you to do it.
Yeah, and the reason why I added the word bridges down there is because all of those wetland crossings, and we have bridges, so if there's a need to replace one, take one out, move it, that's why I put it.
There was an area that said, in all other accessory clubhouse uses.
Did I take it out, maybe? Oh, I took it out.
I forget where it was.
The golf course, resident, to job, maintain, renovate the golf course, I said, any associated facilities for country club, did you notice I took it out?
Good.
There you go, I am trying, I truly am trying to make this.
And it's courts.
That everybody's happy, you know, I am.
We have the boilerplate that comes up.
And then the one thing I just wanna point out is, is there was some contest about all the, now it's washed.
Yes, now it's washed. Did anybody turn it?
Could, could, this is just a question, could it be shown on the plan?
I make a cheap talk, Joe.
Could an envelope be shown, shown on the plan, showing the limits to that seventy-five percent expansion, and so that you'd be limited to an area if you want to expand?
I don't think you want to do that.
That's too premature, why would you do that?
You don't wanna limit, you don't wanna limit your right to say no to me in an area, I mean, I'm telling you.
It has to come, it has to come for approval anyways.
I have to go before the VO, yeah.
They may seasonally, the thing is a crappy building, they may wanna just.
Don't we have what?
Recommendation powers?
An envelope, rebuild.
I just wanna make sure that the only thing that could be expanded is the.
I'd have to come to you for you if I have a special permit, if you have a recommendation.
Just in case there's a future owner that wants to.
I mean, if you're before the CBA, you don't have to come for it, no.
I think it's within, that's.
Every real community does that.
That's a construction issue, within an envelope.
Yeah, it's correct.
Not something that.
Especially when you have a special permit on it.
Predict now, that's all.
You should put that usage.
Well, if they're limited to seventy-five percent, certainly.
Oh, yeah, we, we, again, we're not.
We can limit it to fifty if we want it, right?
We're not trying to, you know, make this.
And we're not trying to pigeonhole you into something that is theoretical down the road, you know.
And.
You're running a business too.
And that was, I mean, I think, believe it or not, I think I addressed Kurt's comments with what I had done, and I think if the board just gives me direction on those things that I.
Operation and maintenance language.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Operation and maintenance language?
Oh, I actually, from Brent, right?
Well, it was in the Turner Hill one, it was taken out, that you provide as working operation and maintenance plan.
Yeah, I have one, grounds manager, and that's because they were doing a ground-up construction.
Is the language you put back in it?
It's, no, because I would just.
There's another reason for meeting with Brent.
Well, there's a, there's, I have one, and I included in your package, I just didn't stick it in.
Well, I seem to be glossing over this issue, I mean.
I mean, I have a plan.
I don't know if there's a need for it, I don't know if the board feels there's a need for it, if it's in the conditions, I don't know if it has to be.
Oh, yeah.
The issue of going back to the conservation.
Yeah, see, Brent, about that, I mean, I think something.
And it's in your package, by the way, just so.
All right.
But I just, I guess what I'm trying to get a handle on is if, at least in its present form, you don't have comments, because.
Well, you just.
He's a recommendate, recommending, oh my goodness, he's a recommendation, and you are truly the board that kind of gives him direction as to what you're looking for.
Well, you know, I mean, part of this dialogue is that we'd be listening to what the Conservation Commission is saying to you.
Right, I think you see.
And evaluating whether that makes sense, or maybe it doesn't make sense in this particular context, so, you know, I don't think we can at this point say, you know.
Believe it or not.
You are a blessing for everything in here.
I think he told you, those are, those really are his comments, I mean, I know they're pretty, I think.
Okay, now I have to, because it's getting late.
Right.
That, we agree, but we're agreeing that, because, in respect to the Conservation Commission, which has, you know, some money in this game here, you know, and that, or some, you know, they absolutely, in the skin of the game, thank you, that, no, in the skin, that we just have to do that stem, we have your premise, the point is taken, it's well taken, and the work is well appreciated, and I think it's much closer, I appreciate me, is that the draft, but, I just think you just have to meet, I think the advice from this board is precisely that, you know, you want us to take this wording to leverage yourself with Brent, you know.
No, 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 absolutely not.
That's what you're saying.
I, I, trust me, I'm not gonna need your leverage, I'm gonna tell him what I can do and what I can't.
Right, which is a good, that's, that's a good problem, that's a good.
I just wanna make sure, the things that he truly doesn't, you need to be comfortable with the fact that I said, look, I'm gonna, can I, if I, can I expand my country club if we get the right to buy the land behind us?
I'm a little unclear about that, I mean, this is the first time I've seen this language, so.
No, I think we're trying to encompass the future contingencies that may happen.
And it was mentioned by someone dealing with the landowner of the budding, a budding land, and so, seriously, you just try and think of anything that could happen in the future, and try and cover it, as long as it doesn't hurt the town.
Right, and may actually help the town.
And it takes that land out, out from being developed in the future too, I know it's hard to develop, and so that may be.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, you know, just opposed to expansion, I.
And make some use of it, can I ask, is the board, there was one area where, I think maybe they could add language on, on getting the word out that the course is open for the winter season. This is on page eight, I think it's worded as, green tier shall ensure that a sign is posted at the entrance notifying the public of when access will be permitted, and it's only when the course closes, so if it's open all, all winter, the sign will blow up, but, and this is just envisioning maybe a new owner.
Please.
That, you know, who knows when the sign goes up, you know, it would just, it'd be nice to either have a solid date, maybe at least.
They won't do that, you can't do that on a public course, I wish, I wish you could, but to do that on a public course would mean you'd say to people it's open, people would come, be on the course, there'd be people playing, because it wasn't really closed.
You can't ask that of a paid, of a, of a profit-making business, because then you're asking for the profit-making business to inhibit their ability to make a profit and therefore hastening its demise.
And so the difference is Turner Hill is private because Turner Hill is open December first through February twenty.
They close because they, they collect twenty-five thousand dollars per person. I'm making it up, I don't know what they, I don't know what they can...
They have a cash, they have a pool of money to operate throughout the year.
Exactly.
Whereas public courses are operating almost like a restaurant, they operate based on how many people come there and pay them.
That's what I'm saying, you know, when, when you talk to the ConCom and, and you're going to give the same explanations or pitch that you're giving to us, and we're finding it reasonable, they may find it reasonable too, but I think, I think the dialogue has to take place.
Who has the determining vote on the conservation issue?
Well, they have to, well, no, wait a minute, they have to sign this document, I don't think they can be forced to sign it.
No.
No, but they can tell us...
They cannot.
So you better meet with them.
I, I think it would be helpful if they moved and were more agreed to this.
We have the determining factor, you know? No, our determination, that's a really good point that David makes, that we're here to give guidance to the applicant. Uh, number one, to comply with zoning, number two, that the scope is finally within what we generally agreed to. And to give the blessing to them to say, "All right, go through the process." But part of that process and the road to that process, because the grantee is, uh, the Conservation Commission, that they need to...
Yeah.
So there should be a planning board member, Cliff or somebody be there.
Yeah, definitely.
Sure. But I think, I mean, so... Somebody's got to explain to them where we have come from and what we have... Well, we've come a long way, I mean, with the work of Katrina and where we discussed it, so, I mean, they're ready to do that, and just, and that way, you know, there is a risk, you know, that incorporates in the permit, and then the next, you know, argument's going to be, and I don't think, I'm not going to bring that up tonight, not argument, but issue, is how this gets incorporated into the permit in the context of your construction, in real, you know, you know, in terms of, no, whether or not, Cliff was saying in Wild Pastures, there may have been a, you know, and you said that would be the kill that would, you know, kill the deal.
Will they have a condition?
Yeah, a condition that...
We couldn't even, we couldn't even get along through a bank with that condition.
No, that's not true, because we've done this before, it is, if there hasn't been a problem.
But I mean, that's, that's something, I don't want to, I don't want to digress to that tonight.
I'm telling, I, I, I represent banks all the time, and I'm telling you...
We've done this before, so it hasn't been a problem.
And I have too, and I've never been allowed to.
But I think we need to be reasonable, we've come this far. I don't want to come this far and, you know, have this be something that, um, includes them from having construction and, like you said, based on a third-party approval, without some kind of fallback that help, you know, that not only they have, but the town has. I think we have to make the assumption that this is going to be approved, but there has to be a fallback.
What's, what do you say?
The fallback is the third, is the conservation restriction, you know, the in-house one.
It's not good enough for me.
Well, just...
Just saying, it's not acceptable.
Then...
I mean, we won't be able to get their, their restriction done in, in the next four, six months.
I don't think, at this point, holding up the transaction part of it and the construction part of it for an unknown number of months is fair at this point.
Well, it's not, it's not an unknown number of months, I mean...
The process is a feedback process where, you know, it may take the state, I don't know if they have limited...
Took me six months last time I did it.
I don't know how long it takes the state to get back, because they, you know...
You need to meet with ConCom and get this started.
Well, I tried, I've been, I, I would love to, I will, I mean, I...
Right, you're going to, you're going to, that's our advice tonight.
But I, but we really do, and, and I appreciate what your comments are, and I appreciate you're saying that this is, you know, an issue where if it isn't approved, you can't grant an uncon... You can't grant the decision without conditioning upon the receipt of approval from the EEOA. And my position is, I really do need to know that, and I need to know that pretty clearly, if, if that's going to be your position, because that means I have a condition that is out of my hands, completely, totally out of my hands.
But the only other option is not making a decision until the state accepts it.
Well, we can ask you to make a decision, and we would have to, because...
We'd be perfectly fine with that option, but you don't want it.
Well, we, we would ask for it, we would, and...
Ask for what?
We would ask for your decision, because I would have no choice. I, I have no, I have, I'm not, I, I have never tried to force you to make any kind of decision, but my point is, is anything you've ever wanted that has been reasonable, within my control, you have received and you have gotten. When you ask me to do something that is completely and totally outside of my control, yes, then I'm going to have to say to you, that's unreasonable, unfair, and something that we need to discuss, and I'll give you a fallback, I'll work diligently to get the, the thing approved, I'll call my contacts to try and get it approved, but knowing full well that it takes somewhere around six months that you create an unreasonable restriction.
And I got to be honest, how long have we been at this? How many months?
What do you mean?
Let me start this process.
Formally, here before the board, it was twenty-six, eleven...
It's a year.
Before, no, I don't know.
Formally, and there was something in the way.
No, it's not a year, it's not a year.
Then we had a three-month lull that we, we didn't get...
Ralph, Ralph, the meet-a-bit has been fairly, you know, we've knocked down a lot of issues in only like the last three, four meetings.
No, we, we appreciate that. And, and I'm just saying, I don't, I'm not trying to put pressure on where pressure doesn't need to be. I'm just concerned.
I don't want an impenetrable roadblock at this juncture, because I think that you guys have cooperated as well up to this point.
Oh, and we can, we plan on continuing to do so.
And this just is one of these, you know, it's...
Katrina, I wonder if you could dig up those two decisions, just to see what we've done in the past, because, you know...
So that's, um...
Wild pasture and Foxmouth, the special permit decision.
Yeah, I was going to ask you the same thing. All right, I mean, just...
In both cases, they...
That doesn't prove anything, because it's...
It doesn't, they just meant it was an acceptable condition. I, I know that when I write a zoning opinion, I can't, I, I will not close for him on that, I will tell him I won't do it, because it's my license, I won't do it. I won't close the loan, because I can't write that zoning opinion because it's a condition.
I understand where you're coming from.
You know exactly what I mean, I can't do it.
Yeah, because they are looking for zoning opinions.
Yeah, and I'm not going to put my, my, I can't do it.
So you think the correct process is to have an approved, a state-approved conservation restriction in place before the decision is made?
No, I think that you need to have it in there as a condition with the fallback of a thirty-year, because there's a possibility that it won't be approved. And under your guidelines, you cannot, the law is clear, you cannot force an applicant to succumb to a third-party will. If they do everything possible to create a condition or satisfy a condition, and you say that I have to, I'm subject to this party making a yes decision, it's a wholly unenforceable condition, and the court will not uphold that condition.
No, no, and legally, just think about...
But the option is not to make a decision until it's accepted.
No, it is not, the option is to have an alternative, and the alternative is the thirty-year.
I think the option is what the one Katrina suggested.
Absolutely, it's not, because you can't force a third-party...
If we can't impose that kind of condition, I say, well, let's wait to, we won't issue the permit until we actually get this done.
So then let me ask you a question, say the state refuses to grant it, are you going to...
Then we have a big problem.
But you can't, again, that's something that's outside of your capability, I shouldn't say, it's outside of your, your jurisdiction within the terms of...
We're going round and round on this.
I would like to get an opinion on that, I know...
Do, do me about it, definitely.
No, we agree with the issues are. I think that, well, two things, we wanted to have the board look at the work that has been accomplished, and all up to the last minute. Have more time to digest it, but also have them have time to work with the Conservation Commission, um, because right now we're talking theoretical, and we need to give it some more thought, maybe look at the previous permits.
Does the board want...
I'm not going to go back and forth about it right now.
Just, do you want me to work on writing a request to Judy that hopefully everyone can look at?
No, not yet, not yet.
No, it's too premature, no, 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 no.
But I think they want an answer.
She knows what the process is, no. They would, they don't want, you want, they want an answer whether or not, what we're going to put in the permit, but there's a couple of things that still have to happen, you know, it's not, we don't have to make that decision tonight. Okay, because we're not at the permit, Larry's not there, we're not there.
I know, but you're asking us to...
I'm, I'm asking, yeah, you have some thinking to do as well.
But I can't...
And go back, I, I, I understand your point, you don't need to, I mean, I've been through transactions with zoning opinions, and that, you know, you're right. You can't write them if you can't back it up, you know, through, through case law, through, you know, take the point, so we'll look into it more, but right now I want you to go to the Conservation Commission, bottom line.
I will, but I have to tell you that it's almost, if, if your decision's going to contain a condition that I cannot satisfy, and you will not provide me with a fallback, there's no, it's moot.
But I, I gotta give the board, this is all, this just happened in the last hour. The board needs to think about it.
Mull it over, I get it.
This is a really important...
Well, that's why I was hoping you'd allow Judy to respond to it, because I think she'd be critical in your decision-making, because she's, she's going to echo what I'm telling you.
Well, that's fine, yeah, I mean, I think Judy started, uh, we asked her for an initial take, but we've come, we've made some steps since then. And if she, that's fine, I mean, I don't know why she wouldn't even have some input.
It isn't really questions about the conservation restriction inasmuch as it's the process and what is allowed.
What is allowed in our special permit? I mean, I don't...
I think that's the question that needs to be answered first, I mean, you could do Conservation Commission side to side.
I'm still going to go, I'm still going to talk to, trust me, I'm still going to talk to Brent.
Brent took the time to analyze this, he needs to get...
And I'm going to call him.
You took the time to incorporate, I have... But that's not the problem, Brent's not the problem.
No, 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 but I'm still willing, what I think, I'm going to talk to him still tomorrow. I'm just not going to stop my process. My point was, is I would love it if we could just engage Judy, Ms. Pickett, I can't remember her last name, just to engage her to, to corroborate what I'm telling you, what are a condition that's, that's contingent upon a third-party...
That gives me guidance, it's chairman. But there has to be a way to accomplish what Judy and what this...
And that's, exactly, and that's the point.
Well, I keep saying this, we've done this in actually three projects, we need to see what we've done in those cases, you seem to think that's irrelevant, but I think it's fair. And they were financed, and the, the, uh, the CR sailed through, there was no issue. And the lawyer on the other side was Ted McNady, who's a very, uh...
He's a great guy.
Great, very good real estate lawyer, so I, you know, I'm a little skeptical of, of the claim...
Well, that's, okay, we're, now we're going back.
I know Ted very well, and I'm shocked that he did that.
Now we're going back.
I am.
We got the research, you know, we made progress in a lot of other issues tonight, and I knew, you know, we already kind of implied, we knew this would, um...
Do we make a decision on asking Judy yet?
I, I think we should hold off, I, I don't think we're even, we're not even sure, I don't think we're even sure what the, what the question is we want to ask her.
Well, Katrina has a question, but it is...
I mean, it's the process, right? I, I mean, I, I think that's, that's what needs to be answered right now before they want to go any further, is, is if we are agreeable to have the backup plan in, in place, and also can we condition it on the state approving conservation restriction?
What do you mean, if we are agreeable to the backup plan?
If, if we can't condition it on state approval, then we have to consider having, allowing them a backup plan, which is the perpetual thirty-year?
With extensions written in.
Would the planning board even consider that? And if the answer is no, then they have to make a decision.
But I want to hear before I say no on that, we don't want, that's why I would rather ask Judy. Because I want to be on solid ground with whatever decision we make.
Right, because that's a big decision the board has to make. And they have to know what they're, they're basing it on.
Well, I think, well, I don't know, I think we all...
All right, no, but we, we have opinions that have gone around based on this fresh information. This is a fresher, new draft that's incorporated Brent as a, something that...
And I'll talk to Brent and give you another...
This came across this afternoon, so we made progress on something that came today. And the burden is upon, you know, the applicant to have an approvable CR based on our bylaw, that's the bottom line. And I think you're heading in that direction.
They win an award for paper-producing project.
Oh.
We don't want, and I don't want to go backwards here, I just want to go forward. And we have other, any other comments, issues, because we have some things in the agenda, so... That's why, and Jill, the same truth with you, because right now, we know the positions.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking to Brent tomorrow.
I don't look at them as problems, I look at them as opportunities to get further, you know?
Well, I have a feeling Brent is going to tell you that you really need to speak with the commission.
He may, and then that's...
Maybe a matter, more of a matter than just talking with Brent.
I, I, of course, but that's where it starts.
Maybe a couple of commissioners can be there?
Absolutely, they can.
Just got to hear that from, yeah. That's, that's why we have professional help.
No, and you're going to call him, right?
No.
The board has heard the various sides and needs to think about this.
Maybe we can just all meet in one room with the fire chief?
Separate meetings.
That'd be fun to see.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hard work and stuff, and we will, we'll look it over, because you also gave us some stuff on press and some, a little law, you expanded, or no?
Yeah, just for the, the alternative restriction.
If you, if you're prepared to just jump to the next one, you can start.
While you can send a meeting. Thanks, Brent, thanks.
Well, thank you, Peter.
Do you have a large-sized copy of the plans? Pardon? One large-sized copy of the plans I brought with me? Um, it isn't fine, no, you know what, just a mid-size, and as long as you send one, I'll see, yeah, and then we have just one, we'll sign one.
What? What do you all dress up with, I think?
Give you an answer, that's what I'm...
Huh? You're us?
I have no...
Plus they have non-watering portions, just another one.
Good answer, you can't do this kind of posture. Part of that is the court, I mean... All right, what do we get?
It's not a business decision, but...
But it's a legal decision that we just have to, you know, make sure we have all the information that we need. You bring up a good point, I mean, we haven't used Judy much in this so far until they sent one paragraph and a first take on a golf course being used as open space and having a CR.
You did not continue the public hearing to a certain time of day.
Oh, shit.
Do you want me just go down and get them, do they have to be here? They don't have to be here.
Not really.
No.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Um, I don't, I don't, what's the calendar here? I thought we were planning...
And it's a good thing, because you're still talking about it.
I thought we were planning a meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Yes, but that's going to be a filled agenda, because we're going to have three cell tower site plan review public hearings on that day.
No, it's going to be the twenty-eighth, they're coming in on the twenty-eighth, so...
Cool.
I want to continue the public hearing to the twenty-eighth, squeeze it in.
Cell towers are pretty simple.
Yeah. You know, it's not like we're building cell towers, we're, we're switching out antennas and stuff, you know? When we were building cell towers and starting from scratch.
It should be, uh, we should...
People used to get into weeks of engineering discussions, because it was an educational process as to...
Right.
You know, the coverage and this and that, now that we already have the membership.
Order, Mr. Chairman.
Twenty-eighth.
Seven, seven-thirty, we already have one.
Okay, you tell me when.
So, um, and then we're going to, we have two public hearings that we have to set, keep in mind, so you want to set...
Eight o'clock.
Country club at eight?
Right. And then we'll work the cell towers.
So seven-thirty is going to be this, I think it's six-eighty, seven, April?
Do we even need a half an hour for that?
Probably not.
Then you can also schedule at seven-forty-five for these other ones? Or even seven-forty and seven-fifty, if they go really fast.
Yeah, why don't we do seven-forty-five for, um, the country club? Yep.
Seven-forty-five.
Since you already told somebody seven-thirty, right? Is that the one with Brent? I thought you said seven-thirty was taken?
Yeah.
By, by a cell tower.
But we haven't set, I thought we were setting it to...
No, that's, that's one that was submitted back in August.
That was one, yeah, right, okay, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, that's Brent, is that what you're saying?
That's fine, so seven-thirty, that one.
And seven-forty-five, continued public hearing?
Right, and then...
For a country club?
We can modify that based on, you know, you informing them, and they have some feedback.
On the, on the continuation?
Yeah.
Well, you really can't, you should continue to a certain date and time, so that the public knows.
Right, unless they can't show up, we don't have that for sure.
Right, and then we can make an announcement at seven-forty-five.
Well, we can still continue, it's going to be enough to talk about between Larry and this.
Did someone have to make a motion for that?
I'm, I'm going to make that motion.
Second from somebody?
Second.
So seven-forty-five, November twenty-eighth.
All right, um, we have, you want to say, we have to set a hearing time for these, um...
We, we have, we have two site plan applications, um, they're in your additional info package. Um, I did, I did make up a little, um, chart, um, a checklist, and I went through it to make sure that everything was submitted. There are some things that are deficient, but they've also included in both of them. Um, a request for waivers of anything that doesn't pertain to cell towers, a kind of an all-inclusive waiver request. And since I have no experience with the board and how they view these application packages, I mean, the, the scale isn't right, but they're reduced down from twenty-four by thirty-six plans, and, and, and it's so huge, the area, that it'll be really hard to do it, one inch equals forty, or one inch equals twenty.
Right.
It doesn't need the detail that a regular site plan...
I mean, my feeling is we should just schedule the public hearing, and if there are deficiencies that turn out, and when, when we're reviewing, and we can deal with that.
And that's our goal, right, that's the goal.
So from now on, is this what you would like me to do, is to check for completeness?
Oh, okay.
But you might want to just look to see what's missing, I, I don't know if it's...
No, we're taking your word.
A deal, well, there are things that are missing.
Okay, missing item, cover letter.
No, it's not, I'm the cover letter. I gave myself a copy, that's why. I, I think they're...
No, the point is, we, yeah, I made it...
And, and the reason why you don't see Verizon on here is, I, I got a little mixed up in the office, I thought two guys were coming in for one-twenty-four, April Street. I never thought...
That's all or nothing.
Yeah.
I never thought that there'd be two different applications, um, and so I, I knew it was MetroPCS, and then a guy came in and said, "I'm not MetroPCS, I'm Verizon." So, and now that...
But they're all on the same town.
So there's two applications at one-twenty-four.
They don't have time, fourteen days, they don't have time to get on the next meeting, on the twenty-eighth. They don't have time, fourteen days, they don't have time to get on the next meeting, on the twenty-eighth.
If I get the ad in Friday, it will be, it'll be advertised.
It'll be fourteen days.
I already checked.
Barely.
Yeah, it will be.
It is time?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah, 'cause there's three weeks in which we will-
All right, you wanna put time for these, we don't have to, it's up to you. Do you wanna address these next meeting, or do you wanna push it to December? She just got the Verizon and the MetroPCS.
Could I suggest do, if they go that quick, I would schedule three before Country Club.
Not necessarily, it depends on the scope, I'm just already looking at Verizon's.
I can explain the scope of these, they're pretty simple. There's three of those thingies, a surrounding one, they're gonna take those three down and put four up instead, that's Verizon. The other one, it will, the looks won't even change, they're just taking those down, replacing them-
Yeah, it's updating, yeah, it's updating it quick.
With similar ones, it's a nothing one.
They go into the latest technology, yeah.
All I'm saying, we can do one, and we don't have to do them both, 'cause we get clogged, you know.
I think that's a good idea.
What do you mean?
We don't have to do them both on the twenty-eighth, we can set the hearing when we want, I'm asking the board. I'm asking you for guidance, what do you wanna do?
Yeah, I think as long as we have sixty-five days open for the public hearing, as long as we meet at that deadline, I don't think-
All right, I'm going to-
Maybe January tenth is the deadline?
I'm going to do one of them, and one in December.
Just don't pick the second.
Which one, you tell me which one?
In December.
What do you think, well?
How do you wanna pick it, alphabetical, who was the first one in?
Who came in first?
Verizon.
Then we'll do the Verizon.
First in, first out.
Okay, Katrina, so what time is available?
Uh, Country Club is at seven-forty-five, you could just schedule it at eight and then take it whenever, but I don't know if the board-
Schedule it at eight fifteen?
No, we don't schedule it at that.
You wanna schedule it, okay. Can I have a motion, please? We set the public hearing for Verizon to replace-
You really need a motion?
Yeah, you should.
Second.
Just so they have it in the record. This is to put them on the agenda for the twenty-eighth of November?
Date is seconded.
Okay, date is second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, that's all, just Verizon goes in second.
All right, and the other ones go into what day, all right, Katrina?
We have December fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth.
Oh, no, not the twenty-sixth.
Second Wednesday of each month, I have an alumni board meeting.
What are you saying there?
Fifth is, well, nineteenth?
December fifth is a week after November twenty-eighth.
You had to go at least the nineteenth, the day after Christmas. Good luck.
We did, right after you left, we realized that, so it's November twenty-eighth at seven-forty-five.
Okay, thank you, I'm walking home, I'm sorry.
No, you didn't.
No, I just drove to get one, and like-
I almost ran out, glad you, when I said, well, there's no reason they have to be here, we can do it.
No, I just, you know what, it occurred to me, she do want.
No, my fault, it was my fault.
No, that's fine, November twenty-eighth, I apologize for interrupting, thank you.
You're really good, thanks.
Thank you.
Drive carefully, don't speed. Not in this. It's fifth, so the eleventh doesn't work, is that what you said?
Twelve does not work for me.
Well.
So we have the fifth, the nineteenth.
Should go to the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Okay.
And that's our only meeting that we'll have, December-
No, no, it's the next week that can happen.
The next week, yeah, right.
All right, so nineteenth at seven-thirty, all right?
Okay, and is there gonna be a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
As a favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done, Katrina, go through the, quickly, the next things. She wanted to schedule a meeting with the MVPs of traffic plans.
Yes, yes, and I don't know if everyone read this, but I'm just suggesting that if you wanted to create some kind of timeline to attack this little discussion with Anthony Komornik-
Mornick.
Um, you might wanna ask for input from other boards, if anyone is interested in, you know, traffic issues, and then possibly, once we, you know, gather all this information, we could sit down with Mr. Komornik, because they're offering their help, and-
I don't know what the information, what am I gathering?
Traffic issues in town, such as the lack of parking now, down in the, across from the post office, the fact that none of those are real parking spaces, um-
There has to be more global issues than that for this town.
No, well, I, one, the-
Well, he wants to-
It's a section of one-thirty-three in Route One.
He wants to meet with us to talk about traffic?
Yes, that's what he's been wanting to do.
And yeah, I think he has some kind of presentation to-
Why don't we just meet with him and see what he's interested in?
That's good, so why don't we schedule that, on the nineteenth? I don't wanna start collecting information from the town so we know what he offers, his expertise, and how it relates to the other town boards, and projects that have already approved, or in the process of approving.
Um, do you wanna give him a time? Seven-forty-five, we have a seven-thirty public hearing that could go rather quickly, so-
Seven-forty-five.
Yes, forty-five.
All right.
Okay, and the scenic roads bylaw, I would just recommend that maybe you discuss creating this scenic road bylaw, some, we received a letter from Robin Pagliarulo recommending that the board maybe look into adopting such a bylaw, it is a recommendation in our master plan, and the board may wanna discuss if they have the time, if they want to propose such a bylaw, and, you know, even if they don't, maybe just send a letter back to her, thanking her for her interest. Just acknowledge it, I guess, I think it's nice if the board could just acknowledge it, because, um-
Well, it's a rebirth of something that already got started in this town, and I think it's a worthwhile.
Who are the members who have been going to the scenic roads thing, I know?
Oh, the byway, um-
Dick Cummings was one of them, at one point, but now he's-
That was one A being declared, the scenic highway?
Right, this is really different.
Okay.
It's a town bylaw that basically requires a planning board hearing for any work in the right-of-way, um, I think that's-
I don't know, it's not like the state guidelines, it's, we went through this when we were doing-
You can't be on a state road, it's going to the Bay Circle, right, a town, town-owned roads. Um, I'm wondering how much support there is on the street in the neighborhood for this kind of thing.
Right, 'cause one was Buxworth Road, and one was, um, I forgot which.
I'm also, I don't know how effective they are at preserving-
We have enough, I think we have zoning issues and revisions to make in our current zoning that are ongoing, without adding another layer of bureaucracy.
Well, I don't know, this is a good, I mean, is something that works well, does it-
I'll look into it, I don't know, I mean, I know designating historic areas or scenic roads-
I need to know more about it.
Yeah, we, I think we do.
I think it helps, you know, in the literature, just like when we were interviewing Bike Pass and-
Glen Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an amenity for the town, that helps make the town more desirable and attractive. And it keeps people from tearing down stone walls, taking the rocks, that sort of thing, cutting down trees, you know.
But I think it only affects the towns right-of-way, so-
Right.
If the stone wall's on their own property, this wouldn't preclude that.
No.
It doesn't preclude anything on private property. So what does it really affect?
It's on a map.
I mean, it affects the-
It's a mapping function.
Scott Levitt from doing certain things, is he required to get here, I don't know, we need to know more about it.
I think we do.
And you know what, I'll just add that it's something that I would love to look into, if I had more time.
She has no time.
Um, and so, I don't know if there's a way that maybe you could get a volunteer, in, you know, interested in researching it.
I think we need to fill the planning board vacancy first.
Um, right, and unless, I mean, if the board directed me to drop other things and work on this, I could, um-
Where did this come from?
Um, Robin Pagliarulo.
Who did some research, I mean, she was the, yeah.
Yeah.
Does she have information?
She copied the page from the master plan, and said, you know, and because she's been to the meetings for the Country Club, and I think she's concerned and realizing that anyone could chop all the trees down along this road, and that's what makes it beautiful.
No, these were the values, when the master plan was written, they tried to identify those values in Raleigh that needed to be looked at in terms of not only zoning, but the process for permitting, so that they were taken into account. And this was an obvious value of Raleigh, as a rural town, that it has some beautiful, you know, it has some beautiful pass-throughs, you know, so. That's, but how we, you know, you make a good point, you can't just have another layer of bureaucracy that's unenforceable.
Right.
Well, I think all you need to do right now is decide if you're ready to start working on it, or you'd like to put it off for the future.
No, it's a valid undertaking goal in my mind, but it's something that has to be put off. Because right now we have some legal, we just have to, we have to knock down these large projects and attend to them.
It's not a bylaw that the planning board has to initiate, or even be done by a citizen's position.
It's just a law, yeah.
Yeah, because it says Historic or Conservative Commission or Concom.
Would you like to write a letter to her, want me to draft a letter, you know, saying some things, thanking her, and, you know, it could be a-
Same Conservation Commission one, 'cause they're not as busy as us right now.
A private initiative.
Yes, we should, we should reach out.
And I could provide some guidance, too, if someone wanted to put some time into it, I could at least put the time into, you know, giving them a head start and helping them along.
All right, just get a draft letter, and, although as Jean was saying, it's something that can be looked at through-
Um, it says Historic or Concom?
Historic or Conservation Commission.
Because I can see what they're saying, you know, it says like tight curves and driveways and stone walls and things like that, it's really, um-
Oh, and maybe suggest that those two boards would be, have time or be interested in backing-
Well, as much as we, you know, they're part of the whole planning function, whether we know it or not.
Okay, all right, I'll draft something.
Can you go on to the next one, Katrina, please? Discussion on selectmen, what are we discussing?
Um, I thought you just wanted to maybe, um-
Didn't they approve?
Yep, they approved it, they posted it, I thought you may wanna make an announcement that you were looking for members.
We're looking for associate members, what, two, one?
An associate member and a full-time member.
And a full-time member.
And you just sent-
Well, a regular member, full-time is misleading.
Well, yeah, it's a, a regular member, and in particular because we need, you know, a supermajority on special permits, you know. Of course, so.
Are you ready?
And I'm saying, associate members are likewise very important in certain cases, and also give valuable input, so, all right.
So will we be meeting with the selectmen on the nineteenth of November?
Yes, I forgot to mention that, too.
Oh, do they have a candidate?
No, they're hoping, well, the resumes are due, I think, fourteenth or so, and they're hoping to get, um, one interested man did come into the office, and he's submitting his resume. I forget his name, but-
Fantastic.
So that would be at what time on the nineteenth?
Um, I will have to get back to you on that, that's all I saw in the letter.
Do you have correspondence?
One victim.
Um, no, I just gave the correspondence to you, we don't have to mention it, it's just for you to look at.
All right, I'd like to go on in two minutes, October seventeenth, if she could look down.
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve them.
I'll second.
I look down, good to me.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Seventeenth, twenty-sixth?
And the twenty-sixth, did you read my description of that? I just happened to find that they were missing, couldn't find any trace of them, and I forget, I found something that made me realize that they just did not exist, but I asked Cable to put them up on, so I watched the meeting, and that was the meeting that Raleigh Country Club appeared informally, so it was very good for me to watch it.
Right.
Um, and also, it's when the planning board discussed allowing them to use the other yield plan.
Thank you for filling in that gap.
So it was important that we have those to answer.
Thank you, Nick. The motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
As a favor?
Aye.
Aye, I've already signed Bill's payable, you had something else about?
No, we already, you already said you, you're fine with me looking through the site plan applications.
Katrina, thank you so much for your hard work and all of this.
Make a motion? Do we make a motion?
I can do so.
No, we can do it, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
Time of ten?
Aye.